Thank you, Dan. Welcome, everyone, to the November 18th, 2020 City of Edina Planning Commission meeting. We're conducting it by Zoom as are most things now. This is a good warm-up for the next four weeks. But I think everyone's had good practice already. And tonight's meeting, we have two public hearings to go through. And there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment on each of those matters when they come up. And we'll give further instructions at that time. Unless there's any other introduction to give tonight, I would ask for staff member Liz Olson to call roll.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Olson? I don't know that we can hear you. Can you raise your hand for being present? Great. Commissioner Agnew?
Present.
Commissioner Brube?
Here.
Commissioner Collin? Commissioner Bennett, you're on mute. I did see him present before, so we'll count him as present. Did I miss anyone else? Okay?
Chair Nemrau.
Chair Nemrau. My apologies. Chair Nemrau.
It's okay. Yeah. No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Liz. And just as a notice to people, Commissioner Thorson will not be on the meeting. I believe he's resigned from the Planning Commission. So we'll probably... I'm just letting everyone know, there'd be no action about that tonight, but we'll probably discuss that further at our next meeting. Thank you, everyone. So the next matter on our agenda is review of tonight's agenda. Has anyone... You know, that's been out since at least last Friday. Does anyone have any additions or changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second? Excuse me. Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote? And for people on the phone, because of... You probably know this, but I'll just repeat this piece of housekeeping. Because of the Zoom meeting and to comply with state law, there's going to be... There's a lot of roll votes. We're going to do... We have... We can't just do aye, yea, or nay on the phone. We have to actually call it one so they can have an official record of who voted. So we're just going to see a lot of that. So Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Brube? Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Nemrau.
So the minutes... Excuse me. The agenda passes. The next matter on tonight's agenda is just also then to review and approve the minutes from our last meeting. If anyone... Does anyone have any changes or comments regarding that meeting? Those meeting minutes?
I move to approve the meeting minutes.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Olson, could you do a vote... Roll vote, please.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Brube?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Nemrau.
20 minutes ago, so I developed a tickle in my throat. So that takes us to our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is a preliminary rezoning from PCD III, that's just a zoning category, to PUD, Planned Unit Development. It's an overall development plan, preliminary development plan, and consideration of an environmental assessment worksheet, capitalized EAW, for 7001 and 7025 France Avenue. Mr. Teague, are you appearing on behalf of the city tonight?
I am. Thank you, Chair Nemrau. I will share my screen. Everybody see that okay? So this project is located in the Southdale District. It's located on the east side of France, west of York, just south of the Galleria. Here's the project site here at the intersection of 70th and France Avenue. Site exists today with the U.S. Bank Office Building. Pictures of the site as it exists today. The property is Zone Plan Commercial District 3. It's this hatched area here in red. It's the heart of the Southdale District. Southdale itself has that zoning. The Galleria is as well. It's our more intense commercial zoning district. The site has a height overlay district of eight stories. That's the area in green here. The site is guided in our comprehensive plan for Community Activities Center. It's this dark pink area. Here's the subject site. This is an area of the Southdale District where called out in the comprehensive plan in the Greater Southdale District as an area of where more density is anticipated and guided for. The maximum residential density here is up to 150 units an acre. Again, this is the area that we anticipated as part of that Southdale District plan for more intense land use development. This is our pyramid of discretion that we look at with each project like this. With this project, a rezoning to PED is requested. So the city does have a lot of discretion whether to approve or deny this request. Anytime there's a rezoning or comprehensive plan amendment, city has discretion in making that decision. So there's some of the details of the request. The applicant is looking to build a one-story, 24-foot-tall U.S. bank with the drive-through. That's the first phase of the development. A 24-story, 270-unit apartment with some retail on the ground level. A 10-story, 190,000-square-foot office and retail building right on the corner of 70th and France. And then a nine-story, 110-unit apartment building. The applicant did go through a sketch plan review through the Planning Commission and City Council, and they've made a number of revisions to the plan. They shifted that south residential building, the apartment residential building, to the east in order for a better alignment for that future north-south connection. They've expanded the green space and enhanced some of the pedestrian environment. We'll see that in some of the slides. They've revised the building architecture to better align with the building typologies that are highlighted in the Design Experience Guidelines. They've expanded the public space just south of the tower and north of the smaller residential tower. And they've, again, enhanced the architecture and provided more detail. So here is a look at the proposal, as if you were standing at 70th and France. So here's the nine-story apartment building. Orient you here is France Avenue and 70th. The 24-story tower with the retail on the bottom, and they stepped the project in as outlined in those three typologies, again, from the Design Experience Guidelines. This would be that office and retail component with the U.S. Bank Building to the south. As recommended in the Design Experience Guidelines, they've divided the site up into four quadrants. Most important here is the north-south connection here provides for both a vehicular and a pedestrian connection to the property to the south. And the east-west connection also provides connection to that property to the east. So this area that's highlighted in green would be developed as part of one of these first phases of the development. This area is highlighted in blue as this is part of the U.S. Bank site. It would be dedicating an easement for future access should the property to the south develop. This would give the city the opportunity to provide that access through the subject property. This area up here is that additional public realm that's proposed south of the tower. Again, this is about 26% that would be dedicated to the public. A look at the U.S. Bank Building from France. Of note on this slide, you recall in the sketch plan, we talked about the bank itself had a 40-foot setback, where the Design Experience Guidelines and City Code talks about requiring a 50-foot setback. The bank would like to hold at this 40-foot setback. But as part of the traffic study, there is a right turn lane that's required. So actually, from the curb to the bank, this is about 30 feet. The perception from France is that it is just 10 feet in front of the building to the north. So something for the Planning Commission to talk about in your deliberations. Again, here's that public space south of the tower. And the applicant will go through these slides in a little more detail. This is the north-south connection in that public space. Menity Deck up on top. Another rendering from France. They did do a shadow study, and as we anticipated and as we talked about in the sketch plan, there would be some shadows in the winter months on 70th. So you can see how that impacts... How that does... That will have an impact. This is the U.S. Bank site. Again, here is that 40-foot setback, what we thought was the edge of the road the last time was actually 30 feet. But the building itself is staying within the same location as was proposed at sketch plan. So this request requires a rezoning from PCD III to PUD. There's a subdivision. They're dividing the parcel into four properties, four lots. And there's also consideration of an environmental assessment worksheet. With us this evening is Ashley Payne from Kimley Horn. They did the EAW on behalf of the city, and she'll go through in detail what the EAW is, how that works, moving forward. So quickly, in review of the site plan itself, circulation patterns. I mentioned the right-in, right-out at the U.S. Bank site off of France. There would be an additional curb cut, right-in, right-out on 70th, and then they would access off the existing roundabout. The red Xs on this screen indicate the vehicular access into the building. So on the apartments on the backside here, there's also access off of the north-south street in this location. The blue X here, this is the delivery and loading area. So trucks for, like, say, the retail or office use. There's a potential grocer here. So they would... Trucks would access off of 70th, come in this way, pull into the building, so it's enclosed and screened, and they would pull out and then pull on to France in that manner. In terms of parking, based on the total square footage and units within the building, there are about... A little, just under 1,400 parking stalls required with this development. They're proposing just under 1,200. So as part of the traffic and parking studies, parking was examined closely by SPAC Consulting. Mike Spack is on the call with us this evening. And right after Kimley Horn's presentation, Mike will go into the traffic and parking study, kind of a summary of the report. But the conclusion isn't regarding parking, is there... The applicant is providing adequate parking to support the proposed uses as proposed. Terms of landscaping, in terms of the number of over-story trees and under-story complementary landscaping, it would be code compliant based on the perimeter. In terms of building materials, we do believe it is code compliant. There may be some issue... They don't have the slide at this particular point, but for the U.S. Bank building itself, they don't meet the transparency requirement at 75%. One of the conditions that staff is recommending within the conditions for approval in that alternative for the Planning Commission to consider is that they meet that 75% transparency, the applicant will be asking that that condition be removed. Also want to note at this point that Mick Johnson, the consultant that assisted us with the Design Experience Guidelines and the Greater Southdale District Plan, did provide a review of the project. And as the commission's familiar with his past reviews, he was very complimentary of this project and felt that the applicant has done a nice job following the design guidelines, the building typologies. Probably one of the most complimentary reviews that we've seen. Oh, I want to go back to this slide. In terms of signage on the project, they would be code compliant in regard to the uses with the exception of this sign right here. This is located on a portion of the parking deck. Our zoning ordinance doesn't allow signage above the retail or office space. So they would be asking for this signage to be allowed as part of the PUD. So that would be written right into the PUD ordinance to allow this sign to advertise a more prominent tenant and retail face. Flexibility that they're requesting through the PUD, there is some relief on the setbacks, as I mentioned, with the U.S. Bank and the interior setbacks as well, which is based on the building height. So they're asking for some flexibility there. And also on building height, as I mentioned, eight stories is the maximum zoning ordinance requirement. And the buildings here are nine, 10, and 24 stories. The floor area ratio also exceeds... PCD is actually allows up to 1.0 FAR, and they're asking for essentially a doubling of that to just over two. And we've talked about the parking flexibility. So the primary issues for consideration here, first is the proposal reasonable to justify the PUD for the site? And the second is the consideration of the EAW and should an environmental impact statement be required for the proposed project? So I'll start with the PUD rezoning. So staff has outlined alternatives for the Planning Commission to consider for approval of the project and denial. We've done that for both the projects that we're considering this evening. For this project, staff is in support of the rezoning of the site. I talked about the location of the site in the Community Activities Center. This is an area that we've identified as part of our comprehensive planning process as an area that can accommodate higher densities, again, east of France Avenue and west of York. The applicant's done a good job addressing the design, the Greater Southdale Design Experience Guidelines. As I mentioned, dividing the property into smaller blocks, providing that public space to provide those connections from adjacent properties. And again, that dedication of 26% of the site for public uses and to provide that additional access. Again, highlighting that dark pink area that we've anticipated for higher densities, again, that public space. So we do believe that they have met the PUD criteria. It's outlined within the review memo. So the second issue is the consideration of the EAW. And so with that, I will turn it over to Ashley Payne from Kimley Horn, who was hired by the city to conduct the EAW study. So with that, I will introduce Ashley Payne.
Thank you, Carrie, and good evening, members of the commission. As Carrie noted, my name is Ashley Payne. I'm an environmental scientist from Kimley Horn, who specializes in environmental documentation and assessments in the state of Minnesota for various types of projects and sizes of projects. Myself and my team at Kimley Horn have extensive experience working on EAWs, AURs, and EISs in the state of Minnesota, and we are on the state of Minnesota's Environmental Review Master Contract List. So as Carrie noted in the staff report, Kimley Horn prepared the EAW on behalf of the city. And considering the city has not gone through the EAW process, recently, we thought it would be helpful to describe what an EAW is and the EAW process. So what is an EAW? An EAW is a brief document designed to lay out the basic facts of a project. The EAW form is actually a standard form that consists of 20 questions. That's published by the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board or the EQB. Next slide, please. So the purpose of an EAW is to inform the public about the project, provide information on future permitting and approvals. It helps identify potential impacts and mitigation strategies. And an EAW does not approve or deny a project. It is a source of information to guide other approvals and permitting decisions. Next slide. So the EAW process. An EAW is a Minnesota state-specific process, as outlined in the state statute and Minnesota Rules 4410. You'll hear me come back to those a few times. So an EAW is completed by the responsible government unit or the RGU. And the RGU is designated by the Minnesota State Rules 4410, and in this case, the RGU is the city of Edina. And so projects that meet the criteria outlined in the Minnesota Rules, so 4410, 4300, are required to complete an EAW. And so as stated previously, the EAW form is a standard form with 20 different questions. And in those 20 questions, we cover numerous topics, including land use, water resources, so that includes surface waters and stormwater, contamination in hazardous materials, habitat and endangered species, so looking at state-listed species, water and sewer infrastructures, looking at domestic water and sanitary sewer infrastructure for the project and in and around the project area, transportation, so that traffic component, air and noise, and then cumulative. And so for this project, a mandatory EAW was identified by Minnesota Rules 4410, 4300, Subpart 32. So that's a really long reference to the Minnesota Rules, but it's for mixed-use development. The EAW was completed by Kimley Horn on behalf of the city. The EAW was noticed in the EQB monitor and posted to the city's website for a 30-day comment period starting on October 26th, and that will end on November 25th. And then written comments should be submitted to Carrie Teague at his email address, which is on the screen, by 4:00 p.m. on November 25th to be included as part of the official record for the EAW. And so after the public comment period or the comment period, the city will respond to comments received during the comment period and will develop the findings, the facts, and conclusions. And then the city will make the determination on the need for an EIS.
So... Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, and I think Mike Spack is going to talk a little bit more about traffic unless there's anything else Carrie wants to cover at this time on the EAW.
Yeah, I would... So I would just add that, so the factors and considerations within the EAW, staff believes that we're mitigating those impacts that this development causes through the conditions that are outlined for the approval process. So the example being, some of the conclusions of the traffic study where turn lanes are needed addresses those impacts. So with that, I will introduce Mike Spack of SPAC Consulting to present the traffic.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Ashley. Mike Spack here, CEO and traffic engineer with SPAC Solutions. And good to see you, Mr. Chair and commission members. A couple of key highlights. We did a thorough, pretty standard study in the city of Edina. Been doing these for a while. We looked at traffic and parking, as well as pedestrian connections, bicycle connections. So just some of the key highlights. This is a good-sized development. Over the course of a day, we'll have about 4,000 vehicles entering and 4,000 vehicles exiting over the course of the day. In the morning rush hour, we have about 200 entering, 200 exiting, and then the evening rush hour, the PM peak hour, about 350 entering and 350 exiting in round numbers. And for parking, we expect the peak parking demand to be between 800 and 1,000 vehicles on a typical day. So we believe the proposed 1,200 stalls, which is a little bit short of code, but we believe it'll be more than adequate to serve the site. We looked at the surrounding roadways and key intersections. So we analyzed France Avenue, York Avenue, and then 70th and Hazleton. And we forecasted out to 2025 and year 2040 conditions, which obviously is a little tricky during a pandemic. We collected current traffic counts here this fall, but we also utilized historic data from 2016, 2018, and 2019. And the forecasts we move forward with on our recommendations were really the more conservative of taking the pre-pandemic numbers and forecasting those forward. Traffic has mostly rebounded in the state, but interestingly, in this area of Edina, during the rut peak hours, during rush hour, we're still down about 30% the traffic volumes. But again, we're basing our analysis and recommendations on forecasting forward pre-pandemic conditions. So to hone in on really the key findings, parking's fine. We support the right-in, right-out access on France Avenue because it takes some pressure off of the one key intersection for the study areas, France and 70th, which anyone who travels there regularly knows that 70th can get congested, especially coming from the west side of town. And we're recommending physical improvements on that southeast quadrant. So right turn lane on France and then widening, as Carrie talked about, because we need to change the paint. We need to re-stripe that western leg coming off the roundabout further to the west, which some days we have traffic backing up past the gas station into the roundabout right now. But we're going to do some re-stripping, and our modeling shows that we'll be able to hold our current pre-pandemic conditions. We'll be able to provide that same level of service with the improvements at France and 70th after this development is added. So that's the quick summary, and of course, happy to stay on the line for questions.
So I will just quickly wrap it up, and then we can turn it over to the planning commission for questions. But again, staff has outlined alternatives for you to consider for approval and denial. Staff is recommending approval subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. We also recommend that the city council not require the EIS. Again, written comments can be submitted to me by November 25th. As the commission has noted, there's been a lot of feedback on Better Together and correspondence. So we've answered some of those questions as part of our presentation, but just want to note a couple of other questions that were asked, but not part of our presentation. There were some questions about the big picture here, who benefits of a project like this. Again, so some of the benefits to Edina provides additional employment opportunities, retail opportunities. It does add to the tax base to keep taxes lower potentially. The project, again, has followed those Design Experience Guidelines that were put together by residents of Edina that worked hard on the Greater Southdale Study. There was also some questions about Metropolitan Council projections and increases and what caused those increases. and increases, and what caused those increases. What Met Council has told us is they're based on our development activity over the last five years. You know, we've seen a lot of residential projects approved. And so it's not only based on what we're experiencing in Edina, but also the greater metro Twin Cities area. There has been an increase in growth. But just to provide you some numbers, since 2013, the city has approved 2,700 housing units. Of those, about 2,200 have been built or under construction. That was another question that was also asked. Another question that came up was in regard to infrastructure. Is there an infrastructure to support the project? Who pays for that? The developer is responsible to put in those connecting roads. Is adequate utilities to support the project's sewer and water? Also, with those, with that, the construction of those, the pedestrian connections and those street connections, it is the responsibility of the developer to maintain those in the future. So yes, there's public easements over them, but it is the developer's responsibility to maintain those. They also had a question about damage from construction. There may be some piling that's needed. Should the project be approved? If it is proved that the development has caused damage to adjacent properties, they would be responsible. So with that, I will stop there, and we can answer any questions they have. And again, the development team is here to make a presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Teague, Ms. Payne, Mr. Spack. So at this point, I'd like to ask if anyone in the planning commission has any questions for those three people. Commissioner Strauss.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Ian. Carrie, if you could go back to the view showing those north, south, east, west connector, so the street, the plan view showing those connector streets. It had the green and blue borders.
Yep.
Yes, that's it. So, so the section outlined in blue will, as part of this development, will be surface parking? I mean, it's a row of trees and then some, so that's how it's built out, correct?
That's correct. That's part of the access to the bank and into their, the drive-through area.
Okay. And then if you go to the very south line of that, of that north-south connection, I mean, there's an existing building there, correct?
Correct. There is the back of the little retail building there, yes.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, the anticipation would be that, that property, which is sort of off, off the paper, when they would come in, the expectation of that development would be to continue that extension, right? Which would then create a street experience from 70th all the way to whatever, is that Hazelton?
That's correct. Yes, that would be the goal there.
Okay. And so it's a really, I mean, it's relatively simple thing to transform whatever they may do at this point, you know, into a north-south street, right? So, okay. But then the expectation on any of the future development to finish that connection per, okay.
Correct. This is the area that I mentioned where they shifted that building over the residential building. This extended into this area here. So is this line being smooth and even with the apartment to the north?
Okay. I mean, so I mean, as it currently would, possibly would be built, it's kind of a T with that leg, which no, there would be no outlet there, but on the east-west, I mean, though, they both would open out into other streets, so. Yeah, and that's, that's, that's correct.
The area in green would be the areas that this development would build. The blue is where we would require an easement for future access to the south. We would need to work out some of the details on how that would work, but the applicant is willing to provide that, that future access easement.
Yeah, no, I think that's an important piece. Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss.
Thank you.
Other commissioners, would other commissioners like to speak? Commissioner Agnew, good evening.
Thank you, thank you. So I have two questions, and I think that they can both be addressed by Carrie, but Carrie tap in others if you think otherwise. So the first question is really trying to understand why we're recommending no EIS. And I know that we had our presenter, Ashley Payne, go through really what the assessment was done, but I would love some kind of like high-level Cliff Notes of what were those findings and how are they being mitigated outside of that additional turn lane being identified? I'm sure that there were other findings from that assessment. And that was my first question, then I'll let you answer, and I'll come back.
Yep, I might ask Mr. Spack to jump in on that. So that's where most of those mitigation impacts come from.
Yes, and we can let Ashley speak to other areas of the EAW outside of transportation. But yes, we start at the big macro picture and slowly bring it in and figure out where there are issues. And everything but for 70th and France will operate to normal engineering standards. And so we need to make improvements at 70th and France to bring it back within the normal levels of service based on our forecasts. So it's a pretty standard, whether it's in an EAW, an EIS, or just a standalone traffic study, which we prepare regularly for the city for developments. We go through this process of forecasting what the future will look like and make sure traffic will operate acceptably.
Yeah, and I can add to that. So typically, EISs are done for very large-scale projects. Some notable projects that have required an EIS are the Viking Stadium, TCF Bank Stadium in Minneapolis. Some of those really large projects that could have some significant environmental impacts or some significant environmental effects. This type of project in the CAW is a very straightforward, standard document with the items that were identified. Some other things that I guess that were identified that required, I guess, I would say more recommendations or mitigation strategies. So for utilities, for wastewater, the city is looking to offload some other developments to the York Avenue trunk sewer main to accommodate the higher potential for wastewater flows from this development, given the density. So those are some of the items that were identified. I would say from, you know, a water resources standpoint, you know, stormwater, they've identified some mitigation strategies for stormwater through the development. And then also, in working with the city to make sure that they're meeting Watershed District and City requirements. You know, there's no wetlands or, you know, really habitat from an endangered species standpoint. I think we had one that was identified within one mile of the project site, not anything in the project vicinity, but in looking at that, we have to look outside, you know, one mile, a one-mile buffer, was a Blandings Turtle. Given there's, you know, it's a highly urban area with no wetlands, you know, the likelihood of finding or having a Blandings Turtle there is pretty minimal. You know, the applicant is looking, or the developer is looking to add some landscaping areas to the development, which could potentially provide some pollinator habitat and some additional trees and everything from that standpoint. Nothing showed up on the state Historic Preservation Office database review within the area, which is not surprising, just given, like I said, the urban area and just, you know, the redevelopment and the development that's happened. I'm trying to think if there's really anything else. I mean, those are kind of the topics that are covered. And so I would say, you know, the mitigation or the strategies that have been identified would be, you know, mitigated through the standard kind of state process and then also through the city process.
That's very helpful. Thank you for going a little bit more in-depth. One of the questions that we received from a community member, and Ashley, just to go a little bit deeper on that, and I don't know if you can answer, but the reflection was, it was a horticulturist, actually, who wrote in. And she was commenting on the fact that the area might be sorely deficient in meeting the oxygen needs of the proposed trees. Is that something that's within scope of what you're looking at? Or would that be something that I should ask the developers directly later?
That's not something that's typically covered in an EAW. That's more specific to the type of landscape and trees that they're looking to put there. I guess I would, that might be a better question for, you know, the developers or the landscape team.
Okay, thank you. I will save that one for later then. Okay, and then my last question that I have, and Carrie, this one's probably back for you. I know that the grid that you showed, really representing the PCD3 versus the proposed, is what's in the proposed really that outline of what a PUD would entail? Or do you have a clear distinction of the difference between a PCD3 and a PUD?
In terms of the base city code requirements?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me pull that up.
That's super impressive that you have that on the ready.
Okay, can you, you see that?
Yes.
In the middle column, that's the base PCD3 standard. So our 50-foot setbacks are generally meeting that, with the exception of the bank. Setbacks on 70th, 30 feet, there's one of those turn lane factors, again, there. And again, the interior setbacks are based on the height of the building. So those structures basically couldn't be built under standard zoning. The standard height, the height overlay district, has a maximum of eight stories. In this project, the three of those buildings exceed the eight stories. The density is in, is in conformance in terms of the number of units per acre when you look at the overall site. That's how we, that's how we calculate that. The FAR, the square footage, and this is one of the reasons that the AAR was, AAR, the EAW, sorry, that was triggered here, is that the FAR that they're asking for here is 2.1. So that far exceeds the standard FAR that would be allowed under the PCD3 zoning. And then the flexibility with the parking standards. But those are the, this kind of, this highlights the deviations that they're asking for.
Okay, and so this is more like a logistic question than I think. Instead of us just granting variances to remain within PCD3 and saying, you know, we'll grant a variance for the building height, as an example, they have to then be placed into, or this has to be a PUD zone in order for us to even consider those types of adjustments?
That's correct. So we would adopt an ordinance specific just for this site. And that table that you see, the far right-hand column, those become the zoning standards for the site under that PUD ordinance that we write. It's just specific for this site.
Okay, and so if we were to approve this for today, would we have the ability to tweak some of those still? Or is that the only very, excuse me, new development zoning that we're under consideration for tonight?
It's possible. There can be some tweaks. This would be like a first reading of the ordinance. Second reading is at final approval. So let's say if this is approved on a preliminary basis, they then come back, develop the plans a little further. Oftentimes, there are tweaks. Sometimes a story might be taken off or two, or whatever the council or the planning commission, they recommend, recommend. So yeah, we would adjust that way.
Okay, but tonight, we're not even gonna go super in-depth on the proposed land use beyond the zoning discussion, because we're revisiting that at a later session, correct?
No, it's all part of it. So if you don't feel that the stories are appropriate here, this is the time to bring that up.
That is all the questions I have for staff at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Agnew. I thought I heard, is there another commissioner that would like to speak? Was that?
I have a question.
Sure.
I apologize for not having the camera on. Every time I turn it off, I freeze, so. So Carrie, I know you talked about the 26% of the public space. And is it easy for you to pull that graphic back up or that slide? Great. So my question is, so, you know, that's, that's a great percentage. I love seeing that. But in reality, a lot of that is that blue space, right? That is just really easement. And, you know, when, I think when we hear, get excited about 26% of public space, we think of open space or usable public space. So really, point out what else we're getting in addition? Is it just that rectangle, that other green rectangle, or?
Yeah, so that's a good question. That's a good point. So, yeah, so this wouldn't be developed immediately. So interior to the site, it would be these spaces. What I'm not including is the 50-foot setback along France. You know, it's a standard code requirement, but there, you know, this is a pretty substantial space here that is for the public as well. And so 50 feet all along France, and then the roughly 30 feet along 70th. So that could be considered public space as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was my question.
Also, any other commissioners? Commissioner Miranda, good evening.
Hello, thank you. Yeah, under similar question about the 26% public areas, that's just publicly accessible, right? That's, we're not, they're not subdividing the property. Those aren't public streets. So if somebody wanted to protest there, for example, the owners of the development could prevent them from doing that. They don't have First Amendment rights in that area, right?
That is correct. Potentially, this space in here, depending on, you know, what's decided for the specifics of that public space.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Miranda. Other commissioners, you don't have to. If you don't have anything, that's fine. I'll ask a few questions, and if any, if any other commissioners have any other questions, just let us know, and then we'll have the applicant will get a chance to speak, and we'll have another question period for the applicant, and then there'll be time for members of the public who want to provide testimony. Carrie, a little different angle, a little different, one comment we got on Better Together was from someone that said she participated in several different meetings with the applicant, but also wanted to share her feedback by Better Together. I have a question here. First, I just want to take note that it's great that there were several opportunities that the applicant gave to members of the public to give input. And it's great that this person did. From time to time, people are, people wish they did not have to provide input multiple times. Is there, is there a process for that? Or is that something we should talk about offline or at a different time?
Well, the opportunities to provide feedback would be the two public hearings. This one this evening, the one that the city council will hold. They can provide feedback on Better Together. They can also fill out, on the website, there's that correspondence form that they can send directly to the planning commission and the city council. And then again, And then again, like you mentioned, the developer did hold, uh, I believe he held a, they held a couple of neighborhood, um, Zoom meetings where they sent out notifications to, I believe it was, uh, property owners within a thousand feet.
Okay. Thanks. Um, a second, uh, retrace a little bit. We've talked before. We, we've just seen several comments as we do often about the height. Uh, it's too, too tall. Could you, could you delve into that a little bit more and maybe explain why you thought that, why you, how you got comfortable with the height? And I, I, I'm sure there's some historical issues that, you know, have been discussed specifically regarding height and also generally in terms of planning. And I'm wondering if you can just discuss those historical issues and other things you might have and just how you got comfortable as representative of the city with the height of this project?
Yeah, certainly. Um, yeah, there's no magic number. 18 is the right number of stories, 24, 12, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty subjective. Um, I go back and part of my being comfortable with the height. Um, we talked, again, going back to the, the Southdale study where we talked about allowing greater heights if it's appropriate within France and York. I also think back to the Estelle project. Being on the west side of France, I heard a lot of, you know, and that was 24 and 28 stories, I believe, for the two buildings. I heard comments of, um, from the city council as well, that if that project were across the street, again, in between France and York, they'd be comfortable with the height. So the way they've, they've done the height, it's further away from France, kind of into, uh, more into the heart of that district. So for those reasons, staff was, was comfortable. And again, they did follow those, those typology suggestions and the, the design guidelines where they stepped the building back.
Related to that, and this might be a little bit of, uh, uh, planner university detail, but one thing, one thing I note in this project is that the FAR, the floor area ratio is high, higher than, than the standard for the area, yet the density numbers are below standard for the area. Can you talk about how that happens? And, and, and which, which really are, you know, we, we generally, people here talk about density. I think that's more of a layperson term. You know, but you, can you, can you talk about how those interact and what we should be thinking about?
Yeah, certainly. That's a great question. So the FAR is the floor area ratio. It's the total square footage, both for residential and the commercial, um, the commercial and office. Within this project, there is predominantly residential. So there was more square footage for the residential than the, the office. Residential is not going to generate as much traffic compared to office. So being so heavy on the, on the residential side of it, staff is more comfortable with a higher FAR compared to a project that's really primarily commercial and office. If they had a, an FAR of over two with primarily, um, you know, those types of uses, that is going to generate more traffic. And so it's really FAR, you're looking at the mass of the buildings. So yes, there is more mass with these buildings, given the tower. Uh, but I think the impact on traffic is a little bit less.
Um, couple, two more questions. One is in the, in the notes for today, oh, actually I have three. In the notes for today's, in the, in the packet for today's meeting, uh, the word grocery was used in a few places and I think, and I think there are a few people that hadn't really seen that regarding to this project previously. Uh, this may be a question for the applicant, but uh, do you, do you know what's, what the thinking is behind a potential grocery?
I don't. I think any number of, uh, uses are in play here. Um, but there would be a potential for a grocer to go in. Again, and they, they provided that, that loading area that would accommodate that.
Okay. Um, affordable housing. Do you have details on the affordable housing compo- component of this project?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't mention that in the presentation. So they are, they are proposing to meet our affordable, um, our affordable housing policy. And that is providing 10% of the total number of units, um, either within the project or they would contribute the, the cash contribution, number of units. That detail would be worked out at the time of final approval. I think it would be, you know, we prefer to get the units within the building. Um, but not all projects, um, can accommodate that. So they are proposing to meet the policy, just haven't, um, nailed that down specifically for what that would be.
My last question, and, um, and then if any other commissioners have questions, they can ask them. Otherwise we can go right to the applicant. Transit. We received a few comments from the public about uh, concern about putting this number of housing units in without transit. Uh, as I view it, transit often, transit and development seem to be kind of a chicken and egg thing, which comes first? And I kind of lean one way, but I'm wondering if you could discuss uh, the interplay between this development and transit? Should transit come first before we develop or, you know, or, or do we need to get a, you know, a few projects like this to really cause greater transit attention to the area? And, and, and also how, how do we get comfortable with this development before there, before there is more robust transit?
Yeah, it's a great question. And I'm sure Commissioner Miranda, um, can weigh in on this as well. Uh, we had a lot of discussions about that with the, the Greater Southdale, uh, work group. Um, yeah, transit won't come unless there is the density. So it seems you need to provide that density in order for more transit to become available. So this would be, would be a start in that regard.
Thank you, Planner Teague. Do any other members of the planning commission have questions for staff or our, or the consultants this evening? Commissioner Agnew.
Can I just ask a real quick follow up to one of the questions that you had? It inspired me. Um, so Carrie, is, is there a specific guideline? And I was, I was reviewing through, right, the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines. But does it dictate or suggest a building height maximum, um, within this area? Or is it, it's more vague?
It's more vague.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Commissioner Strauss, do you have a question? I see you're off mute. Okay. Um, well, this seems like a good opportunity to bring up the applicants. We were very interested in hearing what you had to say. Uh, is that Mr. Carlson speaking tonight for the applicant? All right, welcome.
Uh, yes. Good evening, Commissioner Nemrobin, uh, Chair Nemrobin and commissioners. Uh, we're excited to be here tonight as our teams, uh, spent a lot of time and effort since before you had Sketch Plan approximately two months ago. So I'm going to start with, uh, project introduction. Um, to the team members that have worked so hard on this. Um, first of all, we've got US Bank who currently owns the site. They've been a great project partner with us and kind of believe in the team that we've assembled and the vision that we've developed for the site. Uh, representing RSP tonight will be Jeff Huesland with RSP Architects. So Jeff will be available for questions later on as, if anything pertains specifically to the US Bank site. Um, secondly, we've got Confluence as a landscape architect and Westwood as a civil, uh, survey team. So they are both parts of our team tonight. Um, thirdly, we've got ESG Architects who's done a fantastic job of comparing and contrasting our previous results, highlighting the changes that we've made and really helping provide images that are reflective of what we think this classic A site really is. And, uh, lastly, uh, but certainly not least is the Mortensen team of Brent, Lab and Nate Bodrath. And, uh, it's been a pleasure working with what I consider to be a gold, uh, gold, uh, just a gold standard when it comes to construction and development, not only in the Twin Cities, but throughout the world. We've got the staff, the team, the forward thinking and the resources to make a project like this come to life. Um, so, uh, we're excited to talk about, um, this project tonight. Um, you know, when we last presented, we paid attention to, uh, the pedestrian movement, screen parking, uh, the building designs and inspiration. Really come up with a project that, uh, inspires and creates innovation in the Southdale area, area district. And while we're close, we certainly needed to get better. And I think that, that, what we've got tonight is really a reflection of engaging with the city, uh, the county and the community to really bring forth a project that, that kind of carries all of these different stakeholders forward into a post-COVID 21st century setting. Um, we hosted two neighborhood meetings, one before Sketch Plan and one on November 9th. And in each neighborhood meeting, we had over four participants. So we've had good feedback, we've had bad feedback and tried to incorporate as much as possible, um, into this plan. Um, so there on the slides, you'll see our different, uh, community base that we've had. Um, I'm going to touch really quickly on schedule because we've met, we've talked a little bit about scheduling. Still a bit murky and as Carrie hinted, uh, you know, we wouldn't come back for a site plan approval for each of the three individual sites besides the US Bank branch. Um, we would hope to, uh, should we be successful tonight in the council, uh, uh, next month, we would look to, uh, possibly begin construction sometime in late winter, spring of 2021 to build the US, new US Bank branch. Uh, we are, and made a commitment to US Bank to get that new bank constructed and get them moved, relocated up and operating. That's one of the top five stores in the entire US Bank network. Uh, so maybe not want to lose any days of operation. We've made that promise. We'll adhere to it. And then, uh, end of '21, early '22, but to start construction on the balance of the site. Um, our team, uh, is, is one of the mission members or council members that hinted, our shoulders are heavy when we're looking to balance, uh, COVID environment, the challenging social environment, uh, fluid market, uh, changing renter dynamics, both martial and residential, and really unique debt and equity markets. So that's why we believe that engaging with the county, with the city and with the community here is really going to lead us to a great project for, for Edine and really is reflective of this class A site. Um, so we're looking forward to the dialogue tonight. Uh, we're looking forward to your commentary and feedback. And, um, great. Okay. So this is a real great, uh, just slide that our team heard through a lot with, along with the, uh, Design Experience Guidelines, uh, and the Greater Southdale District Plan to really articulate the connectivity and the design that, uh, frankly, Edine and this site deserves. So, um, you know, I know you're flipping through the slides. If there's anything else I should cover. The great Carrie covered this one, the location. I think we all know where it is. Um, I think that's about all that I've got. So with that, uh, thank you very much. Look forward to further feedback. We'll have a team of five available for questions after Neil's presentation. And I promised, uh, I promised you I'll keep, I'll keep it to 15 minutes or less. So.
Yeah. Thank you Ted. Yeah. Neil Ridden with ESG Architecture and Design on behalf of a client. So, um, yeah, we're going to keep it pretty brief. Carrie and, and the questions so far have been, uh, have been pretty thorough. Uh, Carrie's presentation covered an awful lot. So, um, uh, just a couple of first things to note. Um, you know, in your packet, um, in the, in the submittal we provided, um, there's about five pages of comments from, uh, that we received in Sketch Plan Review from you and as well as the city council. Um, a few just kind of highlights of those. Um, I, I pulled out three here and by no means is, is this, um, uh, capturing them all, but, but a couple of three I wanted to highlight and these have already been touched on tonight. Just adding, um, add and modify the project to include more people and green spaces, both. I think we heard that from, from you, uh, loud and clearly from the community meetings and as well as from the council. Um, so pedestrian experience, street experience is very important. We think we've, uh, really done a good job and, and achieved what you're looking for there. Um, a public room as a part of these, uh, spaces, whether there's the park, park plaza or the streets is really important and draws the buildings together and creates cohesive development. We're going to provide, uh, and accommodate that future, uh, block grid pattern. That's been discussed already a little bit tonight. We're gonna, um, we're gonna try as much as possible to, to hide the parking and keep it out of sight and then keep that openness at the ground level as you, um, are looking for, uh, as, as that pedestrian interaction right at street level. My level ones of the building. Additionally, we, in, in your packet, there's a number of other things. One of them was nine things to remember about the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines. A few of those already here, um, have been covered, but just, just to note, you know, not every block or building in a development, um, needs to be connected. Not all these streets need to accommodate vehicles. Most of our streets do, but we think we're doing them fairly well and creating a really nice pedestrian environment with building entries that matter. And then providing those parks and plazas and courtyards is important. So we've added that to the project. All streets are not equal. We understand you have a hierarchy and we've, we think we've paid close attention to the different typologies. Um, in your packet, I'll note that those are, are indicated as well as there's lots of narratives about how we've approached that. Um, transparency at, at ground level, that's been covered again. And then lastly, just the kind of connection that you call for between the promenades and then, and the neighborhood to the west. Um, development can offer, um, those connections. And we really think that, um, with the land we have available on this project site, we're making those east-west connections pretty strongly. So as I mentioned, I'll have a few documents in this presentation. I'll go through it quick. It's a lot of renderings, some renderings which were included in your packet, uh, originally. Um, and, and Carrie, uh, had a few, but I'll have a few more to show you. So I'll go through those fairly quickly. And then during question and answer, we have all the other documents, uh, that are within the packet available. So, um, we've hit on the, on the major project components. Um, we'll note that it's a phased project. There's the four pad sites. Phase one is the US Bank. Um, I'm going to quickly go through these. Site A, just for everyone, so everyone's familiar, you probably remember from last time, that's the, uh, 24 story residential tower on the northeast quadrant with 270 units, 370, uh, parking stalls and then about a 500 square foot commercial flexible space that faces the park plaza on the south part of the podium. Site B, the northwest quadrant, um, is 150 square, 1,000 square feet of office space, um, with parking associated with it as well as roughly 40,000 square feet of commercial at level one. And that has associated parking with it as well. Site C is a 110 unit multifamily building. It's nine stories. Uh, includes 75 enclosed residential, uh, parking stalls. Site D, uh, the US Bank branch, which would be phase one, um, is the one-story building with the drive-through surface parking. Um, and we've already, you know, you've already seen the renderings there of how that fronts France Avenue. Lastly, the site plan, um, consists of, of the network of streets. Um, some setbacks here and there of generous setback on France, uh, with a, with a good amount of green space and public space included there. We'll go over these a little more in the renderings as well. You've seen this slide already from Carrie. Um, the, the thing to note here is that, you know, by relocating to a smaller parcel, US Bank is freeing up and supporting the, the greater objectives of density and, uh, achieving, well, you know, this, this big goal of, of transforming Southdale. Um, we'll go to a few renderings now. Here's, here's the, the, kind of the main view that you've seen already from, from 70th and France. Um, with the site B building in the foreground, site A beyond and, uh, US Bank on the right-hand side. A little bit of a view from the, from the southwest bird's eye. You can see all four projects pretty clearly here, uh, as a part of it and, uh, how they interact with each other, their relationship and scale. We really wanted to go down to some renderings at Street View. You told us people, places, uh, were important and, um, we wanted to show you the detail here. So as you approach the project on 70th and you would turn south onto our street, which, um, for the time being, we've named Ewing Avenue. Um, and it's the north-south street that bisects the project in half. So this is what the view would look like from, from that, uh, angle. Um, with a, uh, commercial tenant there on the right and the lobby of the residential building on the left. Moving a little further down Ewing, um, here's what that street would look like sort of mid-block. The entrance to the lobby space, uh, for the office would be on your right-hand side, kind of in the orange component, uh, that you see protruding out. Uh, site A has a parking entrance, uh, access point there on the left. And then that, um, glassy portion beyond that is, is the flexible retail space that fronts the park. And lastly, it's site C building there in the distance. This would be a view when you get to the end of that street, kind of what I was described as the T intersection earlier. This is looking back north down, up Ewing Avenue. Um, and giving, giving you a good flavor of what the streetscape looks like there as well as the Plaza Park space on the right-hand side. Um, if you were to enter the site from France, um, at what we now are calling 71st Street, um, this is the view you would see. Um, this shows you site C's multifamily building there mainly. And then the lobby on the left of the office building, um, which is, is really right at that corner. Um, the view from the drive-through at US Bank has to be looking north, uh, mostly north, uh, towards, uh, the other three projects, the other three buildings on the project. Again, kind of a similar view from the parking lot of the US Bank Branch Building. Again, kind of a similar view from the parking lot of the US Bank Branch Building, kind of showing the mainly Site A building. Looking back a little bit from, to the northwest, this is that main lobby corner there where you see 700, 7001 France, the address and mainly the Site B building there, you can see the office plates above the screen parking with these vertical screening elements as well as this lobby, which I referred to a couple of other times and the lobby directly across from the park plaza space. This a little more clearly, or this a little more zooming in on the park space here, this would be the west end as if you were stepping out of that office lobby, looking towards the east, I guess with the sun coming up and what the opportunities there would be for green space within that park plaza, some hardscape as well as some signature signage potentially as an idea, potentially some overhead elements in that park. And we were providing some flexibility in this park right now for different uses, for a variety of types of activities to take place as well as offering opportunities for this space to flank it in a meaningful way. And then you can see there lastly on this rendering, the lobby of the C building, the residential building would be right here. And then we actually include walk-up units on the far corner here as well as that other corner that would face a potential future extension of that Ewing Street to the south. This view is looking at the park from the other end, from the east. And this would be kind of right at the property line of this existing strip mall, that's the property to the east of this project. This looks back at this park plaza green space, how it relates to the Site A building. Here you can see again the streetscape on the Site B building. I'm sorry, Site C building. A little bit of an aerial then pulling back where you can see all of that from above. In addition here, you're seeing the podium roof deck for the multifamily building on Site A. A few more views, I'll just, I'll go through some of these really quickly, certainly can go back to them if there's questions. This is the view from the northeast corner of the project where the roundabout is at 70th. Moving a little closer, this is the main building entry for the residential tower along 70th. Looking back towards that residential entry and now you see the corner of the commercial, this again is looking along 70th, looking east. Over to France Avenue as we continue to progress west. This is a view that shows that 50-foot setback from France Avenue. We have a double lined sidewalk there with trees on both sides. There are some green landscaped elements within, in between there that also will double as rain gardens for some stormwater retention at times, but they'd be planted as well during drier periods. And then you can see that continuous glass facade there at level one of the commercial space. I think we already looked at this view a couple of times, this is the US Bank branch with that jewel box component of the community room protruding out slightly from the rest of the building. And you can see that view again along France of there of the frontage on the Site B building. A few more renderings to flip through, the view from the southwest, you can kind of see all three buildings there. An approach, if you're along France, moving north. An approach if you're on France from the north, moving south. Another view there at dusk. A view from the southwest with the Minneapolis skyline off in the distance there as well as some other Southdale area projects built and or under construction. Zooming in a little bit there with a view of the project from above. This would be the view from the southeast, looking back towards the two larger buildings in the site. The view from the promenade included here as well, this would be on the other side of that strip mall if you were moving along the promenade east of the project. And then a few more views of the project from 70th, kind of looking back west. This, there you can see Target in the foreground on the left. And then kind of circling back to the west side of the project, we wanted to include a view additionally from Odyssey Valley View Road and 70th, looking back towards the project in a imposed existing photo there. As mentioned and already noted, the shadow study, I wanted to include just a notation about bike parking in our slide. We realized that that was maybe one aspect we didn't completely cover in our submittal, so that's noted here. Both Boulevard bicycle parking as well as planned bicycle parking within the buildings as well. This was a diagram that we produced for the packet, you probably saw it there, it was discussed at city council as well as here during sketch plan with you. And this is really about that grid block pattern. In pink here showing what we've proposed, in blue hypothetically other connections, streets and/or linkages, pedestrian linkages to complete that grid pattern. And then the larger super block here showing in yellow the existing, showing in blue the potential future street grid connecting through and then again, pink is our proposed. Lastly, just going back to what's already been mentioned, our guiding principles, you know, we're following these Design Experience Guidelines, which we think are great, I love working with them and our team has thoroughly enjoyed producing a project that we hope aligns as well as needed for this project to receive approval. We know there'll be some future flexibility here on the sites as they evolve, Ted's mentioned that already. But just want to thank you for having such great guidance and principles and framework. It enhances all projects, makes our job to do nice projects much easier. So with that, wanted to leave plenty of time for questions and just really be brief. All these are available to go to visually if you would like me to.
Thank you, Mr. Rieden, Mr. Carlson. Mr. Carlson, did you have anything you wanted to add on?
Well, you know, we've had some specific questions that I can touch on. If not, I would prefer to just have dialogue with you, commissioners around the team and just answer as many of the questions as we can about this project.
If you have, if you have questions now that you're already anticipating, you'd like to answer, please, why don't you have at it?
Okay, great. You know, within your packet, there was talk about sustainability, so our team spent a lot of time on the sustainability questionnaire and it really bring a lot of modern, sustainable designs to this project specifically around stormwater management. The site currently is a surface parking lot with a 1973 era building and really all surface parking. We're excited to modernize that and really make some sustainable improvements specifically around stormwater. Secondly, there was a question about grocery and within our submission, I believe we labeled the first floor of the northwest corner referred to as Site B, labeled retail, commercial grocery. Obviously, the commercial real estate markets and all market markets for that matter are very choppy. And with the timing of this project and construction starting, we have success potentially a year plus from now. We just want to make it clear that while this site could, we've designed it to potentially accommodate a grocery, it may not be a grocery. It may be smaller retailers, it may be more office function on the first floor. It's important for us as a development team to just have flexibility on what happens within that piece of the site. Kerry had talked about affordable housing and again, coming back to formal site plan, the project is still in its infancy and with 100% conviction, we look to apply with the city of Edina's affordable housing policy, whether that means providing units or buying in to support future affordable housing. And I think that, oh, I also believe that there is a bus stop currently adjacent to the site on Route 70, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that we plan to accommodate that bus stop, so there's good transit now available at the site and up and down France Avenue. So those were the notes that I had from the previous dialogue with the commission members. So with that, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. So commissioners, this is the opportunity for commissioners to ask questions. Do any of you have questions? Commissioner Miranda, did you, is that you or?
Yes. So one thing I noticed in the difference between this and the sketch plan was the internal streets, you initially had in the sketch plan a berm or planted area in the center. And I think I was one among several members who asked for that to be changed. So it looks like it's been changed, but like in this view, the street looks so, the car area looks so much wider than the pedestrian area and I thought there would be more space for pedestrians. I guess I was thinking it might even allow, you know, pedestrians and bikes to share the space, but that looks like a pretty narrow sidewalk compared to the, to the street. So how is that space reallocated?
Commissioner Miranda, yeah, I can, I can answer that and then our landscape architect, Terry Manick with Confluences here as well. The, the space is reallocated and those, the drivelanes are the standard driveline widths. We haven't made them wider necessarily to accommodate bicycle traffic right there. But all that space that was previously in the middle, our right-of-way zone, has been re-attributed to the sides. I do realize that the through walkway zone there in this particular rendering does appear to be rather narrow. We wanted to leave plenty of area in that furnishing zone in the streets and Terry can maybe articulate the exact dimensions of that or we can go to a plan that does it for sure. But that, that area is ample, that furnishing zone and then the through walkway, I think we're going to make that at least six feet at minimum and look to make that wider if we can with the given space. So apologize for the renderings appearing wide to show that wide street. But Terry, would you care to offer any additional dimensions for Commissioner Miranda's question?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I can't quite recall them, I can pull up the plan here quickly, but if you want to pull up that section too, that he given the backend, that'll really help. So the main, the main cross-section or section through this street profile is basically following what was in the area guideline document. I think what really gives it the perception of feeling like it's a wide street, even when you look at that cut-through section there in a pretty simple sketch, is that this on-street parking really tends to give an appearance of a wider street. So what we've done to kind of accommodate that in our planting plan is wherever there's an end of on-street parking, which, you know, basically we have like three parking stalls, a break, a pedestrian space, three parking stalls, a break and then two parking stalls and then a break. So in those break areas, we've widened and almost tripled the width of the sidewalk and pedestrian circulation space to provide areas of planting, to provide areas for seating, to provide areas for sedimentities such as bike parking as well as trash cans and those sorts of things as well. And then also the entries and main pedestrian flows and accesses to and from the buildings that cross the street with a kind of a primary pedestrian crosswalk through the middle of the block so that people don't have to go to the ends to feel safe to cross the street as well. So I think sometimes it's a little deceiving in the rendering as to what feels like a generous space, but this is a very uniform design that fits the guidelines. And I think the other thing we did here too is we tried to accommodate the planting in larger planting beds as well, which kind of narrows up the pedestrian circulation space, but also provides a really good opportunity for plants to succeed in growth in an urban condition as well as the trees within that urban condition. You'll notice a lot of urban conditions where trees are intrigue rates, they just don't tend to do as well. Like creating a larger soil volume here, a more appropriate soil volume for those trees, we hope that the growth of the trees will be more substantial within this environment as well. So it's kind of a balance between those amenity spaces, the pedestrian circulation spaces, the roof for the plants and the trees to grow and then also fitting in the on-street parking.
And Commissioner Miranda, just to add, page 29 of the design guidelines, where the first bullet point is, streets should comprise two traffic lanes and two lanes of parking for pickup drop-off. That's what we've worked to accommodate, so we've done our best to design the street to fit as closely as possible to the dimensions outlined within the design guidelines.
I'll just note as a follow-up there, the last thing, the dimensions of Ewing is 26 for the driveline, the two drivelines and then 71st is 24 feet.
Okay, so the east-west street is now, it's what, 12-foot lanes basically?
It's slightly narrower, yes, yeah, and it's possible it is a little bit wider at points to 26, but 24 would be the standard on the 71st and 26 is the standard on Ewing.
Okay, I mean, yeah, those sound all like great ideas, I mean, you know, the furnishing space and planting space and everything. I just do think it's important, I mean, I don't think necessarily we need dedicated bike lanes here because they're pretty short blocks and I don't think anyone's going to be racing down these streets. But you know, I just want the pedestrian area, because you know, people, you know, if you ever watch a family biking together, somebody, if there is a grocery store, for example, and a family bikes there, you know, they're going to be going on the sidewalk because they don't feel safe even in a low-volume street like this. So I just want to make sure that we're not going to be like constraining the sidewalk space a little too much, that's all. Thank you.
And I think, I think that makes sense too because our primary pedestrian circulation is on 70th for bicycles as well. So that kind of ties to the regional bike trail that would be along 70th. So we have provided wider, more ample street sidewalks on 70th as well to accommodate that, thinking that that's where the majority of that bike traffic would come from.
Good, thank you.
Other commissioners, because we're on kind of, just on this, this narrow screen, I might just call and use, make sure we catch everyone. But if anyone has anything. Commissioner Olson, you're not using your video tonight, did you have anything? Or Commissioner Barubi, Commissioner Bennett?
You know, I, this is Commissioner Barubi.
Hello.
We have a question, I'll just, I guess I'll just think out loud a little bit. I will say this, this is impressive how you've incorporated the Southdale Design Guidelines and also seems you really listened to our comments from the last session, so thank you for that, I think it looks really good. I particularly like the way, you know, you've segmented this huge block into four smaller blocks, which of course is a key piece of the Southdale Design Guidelines. The, the thing I'm, I'm pausing over is the height of the tower, the 24 stories. And I know that, you know, going up higher provides more space down below. So there's more green space, you know, it allows for the pedestrians, you know, the connectivity. But I guess I'm still, I am struggling a little bit with the height. And I can appreciate some of the concerns we've heard from people in the neighborhood, you know, particularly the Cornelia neighborhood, where it takes a while to get used to this kind of height. And I wonder if you can just speak to the advantages of having that height and whether there is opportunity to scale that height back a little bit.
Thank you, Commissioner Barubi. You know, when we look at balancing the site, we've got four distinct development types within the super block and grid, ranging obviously from single-story to 24-stories. And what we're trying to do is balance the wants and needs of many different stakeholders. And so that's a long ways of saying that somewhere within the site, we need to create something that's, that's really unique and super and really reflective of the high quality of what this site is, is a Class A, it's a synthetic area. So our density calculation at 67 minutes an acre is about 55 to 60% less than the maximum density allowed within an area of 150. So as we think about how do we provide different places to live, work and play, density and height is one of the ways to provide all those things that you referenced when it talks about streetscapes, pedestrian engagement, public area, privately owned streets, things like that. And really providing a high-quality place to live is part of what to make this project work. So frankly, I think we're only 20 feet higher than the west end, even though we have more stories. I think we're, Neil, you would know this, I think we're maybe 40 feet taller, taller approximately than the power. So it's not just stories, it's height and we don't believe that we're very far out of line with other projects in the market. And lastly, as we think about, you know, how do we balance all these different things? We thought about how do we position the building and frankly, this east-west orientation is the least impactful on the neighborhood and nobody kind of tells to protect a lot of those views. Neil has the slide showing the view of this project from the neighborhood. That's also why we stepped back. That's also why we stepped back the office building. So, uh, I think, you know, when we think about, you know, different, different things and, and gifts and so on and so forth, and that to the extent that, uh, we can create some height here, we think it's reflective of what this overall really high-quality development needs to be successful.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to what Ted already mentioned and articulated very nicely is, um, you know, there are those buildings, um, residential buildings specifically that are shorter, um, you know, in the 10-story range, and they end up being really bulky, uh, for the same amount of housing. Um, we think this is a much better approach, uh, rather than, rather than bulking up and, and really doing all that density down low. We think that, um, extruding a portion of the site, and we've been very intentional, as Ted men, uh, mentioned, to do it, um, in the orientation we have and the specific location we have, uh, in order to mitigate, uh, those concerns about height. So, um, we think that, uh, you know, an area or a, a more airy building that, that extrudes up is, is, is more appropriate, consider than, than a bulkier 10-story, uh, type of project, uh, that, that we just don't feel fits as well with all the other components adjacent to us and all the other components within this project itself.
Right. Thanks very much, that's, um, that's helpful. I think it's really important to, to address that straight out. I think it's a big concern of the neighborhood, so I do appreciate, um, your comments, I think they, they make sense.
Commissioner Barubi, other commissioners, uh, Commissioner Agnew?
Sure, I was giving others a chance to, to speak, I've got six questions here. Um, so I want, I want to talk more about the, the affordable housing. And I, I remember from last time, um, site, ah, correct me if I'm wrong, Site C, the, the secondary, smaller version of the housing, um, was referred to as the workforce housing. Um, and I assume that that's still the plan, to have that be a little bit more focused on that affordable housing. Um, and, and if so, what is the rationale behind separating out, um, kind of a, a larger footprint, um, high-rise for some housing and then a smaller separate housing for the affordable housing?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Agnew. I think that's a combination of, you know, what we're trying to accomplish with hiding all the parking on the sites, creating all the parking, providing some density to, to provide all the elements that we, public and benefit elements that we've talked about tonight. And really, um, again, we are not 100% sure of what this building here ends up being. And that's, uh, part of what we would come back for with the site plan. It very well could be workforce, it very well could be affordable, affordable partner. It may be a market rate project, it could be a seating project. So I think due to all of the uncertainties in the market, um, you know, we, what we can make is the representation that we 100% comply with the affordable housing policy, but we're unsure with what this project ends up actually being for housing-specific, uh, units. Does that answer your question?
It does, and it, it provides a segue then into the topic of parking. Um, you know, we, we heard from SPAC who said, um, I think that the estimates for peak parking requirements would be in the 800 to 1,000 range. Yet I see that we're closer to 1,200 from a, a parking unit perspective. Um, why not park closer to that 800 number, given that that's within the range of the estimated peak? And I ask specifically because if you build parking, it will be used. And more use in parking increases traffic congestion, which is a large concern of the neighbors for this type of density within the neighborhood.
Yep, that, that's a great question. And, uh, you may recall that I'm, uh, all too familiar with the parking requirements in Edina. So, uh, we're happy to be below code. Um, and really it's driven by what we perceive to be market demands. And frankly, the, the, the image on the right here, the nine-story apartment building, and I believe this parked at not quite one stall per unit. The tower is parked at approximately one and a half stalls per unit. And the office building is parked at, I believe, about four parking stalls per unit, um, with additional commercial support beneath, one story below grade. And that's both the tower and the multifamily office building having one story apartment below grade. So what we've done is we've adjusted this project to meet what we perceive to be market demands that are nonetheless, uh, not code compliant and significantly lower than what code required.
Okay. Um, based, thinking more about the housing, uh, or excuse me, the parking specific for the housing, would you consider decoupling your parking stalls from the rentals of housing to really separate the market rates for parking and the market rates for housing to further enable affordability in that housing?
Well, I think that's part of why the Site C, uh, uh, is parked at less than one parking stall per unit. Uh, but what we've seen echo, uh, not echo loudly, reverberate through the market is a focus around safety and security. And so we believe that having separate parking, separate access, and separate security for these buildings is an absolute must in this market.
Okay. Um, I, so we'll pivot now to like the on-street parking. Um, are you, I, I remember talking about this last time, I think I made it as a recommendation, but did you consider having parking meters for the on-street, on-street parking?
Um, uh, on other projects, I brought up the idea of parking meters, but I would defer staff on whether they like to have parking meters or not.
Okay. Um, in, in the short term, and I think that this was, um, mentioned with kind of that ancillary area, the blue outline, um, of parking for US Bank as well as, uh, going up against the, um, Site C. And it sounds like there's going to be walkout units along that Site C blue dotted line. Um, is, is that indicating that within that building, people are going to have walkout units directly into the US Bank parking lot?
Uh, we've got, we've got a buffer with the sidewalk and with the new spaces somewhat shown on this slide.
Yeah, I can, I can further allude to that. Um, it's not, it's not stepping out directly onto the, the part, the parking lot for US Bank. Um, there is a, I'll just zoom in a little more on this image, hopefully people can see that. Um, and the, the walkout units there that make up about half of that frontage, um, do step out onto their own, uh, green space buffer area as well as a sidewalk, and then another green space buffer area before you get to the US Bank parking stalls themselves. Uh, as well as the, the parking stalls themselves have a sidewalk in front of them. So we've anticipated the future boulevard there with our relationship to where it would, where that new street would be. Um, and then offered ample space, uh, under the existing condition for them, for US Bank to have a parking lot there.
Okay. Um, I think my last question, um, for now, um, there was a concern about meeting the oxygen needs of the proposed trees. Can you outline your plan to work with landscapers, um, to adequately address the needs of the trees to ensure they can grow long and healthily?
Terry, our landscape architect, would you address that if you can?
Uh, but before Terry does, I would like to say that, uh, the, the, the design team will laugh at me when I say I like giant trees. My spec in our other projects has been to provide the largest trees that we can purchase. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I want you to rest assured that I like big trees because I don't want to be 85 before these trees are about the size. With that, Terry, uh, please help me out on an option question.
Sure. Um, I think part of your question is about, um, survivability, um, the ability for trees in an urban condition like this to do well. And I think a lot of the aspects of what we're doing in our landscape design here is to really try to maximize the growing medium or the growing area for those trees to be able to, to become something substantial. You know, we're, we've become familiar with older established neighborhoods and these large overstoryed trees that have been there for years. And I do think, you know, modern pollution has added to why current street trees do not do as well as they did in the past. But it also has to deal with a lot of underground utilities, a lot of, um, you know, improper soil conditions, plus, you know, potentially pollution from increased car traffic. Um, we're selecting a lot of trees that are, you know, very hardy for these types of environments. We're also working with your city forester to make sure that we're getting a diverse, um, uh, ecosystem of trees in here. And we're not kind of repeating something that down the road, if we have a similar tree and something doesn't do well, or a pest, or, or some kind of invasive species comes in and kills it, it won't devastate the whole neighborhood. Um, some of these areas, uh, that we're within, particularly along France, we are kind of, um, you know, pressed for a very tight boulevard environment. We are achieving the double-lined street tree that was requested as part of the, uh, area, area plan. And as part of that, we have kind of contiguous planted areas, which I think will help benefit the roots of these trees. We're also going to be providing some soils underneath the sidewalks that'll help increase the viability for these trees as well. And then within some of these larger areas, just that increased soil mass will definitely, you'll know, you'll notice the difference between trees growing in that larger soil mass than what you normally see in an urban condition. Once we get to these more tighter street environments, we become faced with, um, you know, it's kind of a restricted area. There's a lot of compaction from roadway construction and sidewalks and building construction. So once again, as we mentioned earlier, on some of these internal streets, we've done a, a lot to try and increase the planted area as an actual planting bed, as opposed to a tree grate, which, you know, there are alternatives for making trees grow in tree grates well, but we think a larger soil volume is one of the key things. So we'll be adding to that, we'll be adding that with structural soil underneath some of these larger urban areas as well. And we tried to minimize the use of tree grates only where needed. And I think there's this one condition right on 71st where we have car parking and the doors opening that kind of minimize our ability to be able to, um, provide a large, provide a, a larger planted area. But we will achieve that by a larger soil volume underneath that hard-surface sidewalk area. So, you know, I think a lot of these things in combination, you were providing irrigation, we'll, you know, provide maintenance, we'll be able to provide, you know, the, the, um, the larger trees, as Ted was mentioning, to kind of give more of a, a visual impact, but also, uh, providing trees that are grown locally that are kind of used to our climate and our environment as well will be, uh, critical to the success here.
Thank you very much. I believe those are the only questions that I have for now.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Agnew. Commissioner Cullen, did you have questions?
I did. Um, I think that this project is very well thought out. Um, I do have concerns with that, the height of that, uh, residential building, you know, with the ice. And I, I do believe, you know, there's concerns for the residents of the neighborhood. Um, but I wanted to talk about, um, my environmental concerns about cars idling on the US Bank site. And I was wondering how you came up with the number of stalls for the, um, US Bank site for the drive-through and how essential it was to the design to have that drive-through? Because, you know, I do, like I said, have concerns about cars just idling around. So I was wondering if you could answer that perhaps?
Thank you, Commissioner Cullen. We've got, uh, Jeff Huslin with RST available to answer the US Bank site related questions.
Yes, and thank you, that's a great question, Commissioner Cullen. Um, the, the strategy, the, of what they're providing for the current site layout is really based off of the, uh, current facility, as, uh, Ted had mentioned earlier on, is one of the top five performing locations in their, in their overall portfolio. And making sure that there's a consistent level of service to be able to provide the usage and utilization that comes along with this really drove the need for the parking and the drive-throughs. Um, we do know that we're reducing the drive-throughs by half. There's currently eight drive-through lanes, so the four were anticipated to be able to maximize the utilization for this site. And when it comes down to the emissions that come off, I, I guess it's really taking a look at what the future looks like when it comes down to vehicular traffic and how electric vehicles come into play. But at this time, this really is intended to meet the needs and expectations of the current banking customers to make sure that their experiences consist of what they currently have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cullen. Uh, other commissioners we haven't heard from, um, uh, let's see, Commissioner Strauss, did you have any questions? Commissioner Bennett, you, do you have your hand in the air? Would you, hello, could you, it's all yours, Commissioner Bennett.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, um, I think a lot of the similar questions I had have been asked, but I don't know if I've received an adequate or reassuring level of response. So I'm going to probably ask some of the same questions, so I apologize and have more discussion around them. Um, again, I, I commend the overall proposal, uh, for it. It really captures a lot of what makes a Southdale area great. It has incredible multi-use all in this proposal. And it's really trying to adhere to the design experience guidelines as well as, uh, greater Southdale design principles. So again, I commend you for that. And I think, you know, a lot of, once we get into the details, you know, it's up to a lot of subjective interpretation of, you know, how does that look like once the rubber meets the road? And I think that's just where now I have some more questions, as we're seeing some of the finer details, um, specifically of the public realm. So if I'm not living there or working there, that's the majority of the residents in Edina that'll be using this area. So a lot of my focus is really on that public realm. I think echoing some of the commissioners', um, I guess, queries and concerns, as, as we're kind of doing these walkthroughs in the, the interior streets, uh, I, I feel like there's a significant lack of either green space or a, a more predominant focus on the automobile and that experience. And I know you've talked through what you're going to try to do, but just from these visuals and having been to places where it's very obvious that the pedestrians, I'm not seeing it, and I know you're trying to accommodate the vehicles, but that's definitely a sore spot for me right now. Um, I thought maybe the berm out of the middle would improve it, but it just seems, and I don't know if, you know, there's not enough, you know, overhangs on some of the, you know, the, the buildings to protect, you know, provide protection during the different elements as people are walking on the sidewalks or what. But if you could kind of go through those again and just explain what you're really trying to achieve, and if it's possible for us to narrow those streets a bit more. Uh, 26 feet seems more than ample for even a busy road, uh, for accommodating two, two lanes of traffic. So, uh, just want to see what we're working with, because again, this is where the majority of the public's going to go and experience, and, uh, right now I just, I feel like it could be a lot better.
Uh, Terry, would you be able, able to speak specifically to Commissioner Bennett's green space question? And, um, then I can address the width of the north-south street.
Yeah, sure. Um, you know, I think the, the primary driver in the way we laid out these streets were the area guidelines. Um, we wanted to make sure that we're complying to what was desired for this district and this kind of being the first block to truly test those guidelines, um, you know, in perpetuity for what may happen down the road to any other block. So we really wanted to follow that, not deviate from it too much. I think the critical aspect to on-street parking, which might make this seem wider than it needs to be, is that on-street parking tends to slow traffic movement. And I think that's super critical in a pedestrian environment here. To have just a drive-through area where people don't have a place to park and they're only accessing maybe a kind of little underground parking areas, I think it would be, um, almost a disservice to the pedestrian environment by just having that traffic flying by and not really providing that opportunity for people in a Minnesota climate to be able to pull over and park and find a potential parking spot on the street. I think that parking on-street actually activates the pedestrian environment a lot more. Um, I think you might find people more tending to be on some of the other streets if there is no on-street parking to kind of try and find that convenience. Um, and I think, as mentioning, you know, you can kind of see the sidewalk width, um, is a pretty standard sidewalk width. Um, but what it also does is, as part of that sidewalk width, we're creating that secondary kind of yellow condition you see in these drawings, it creates that kind of more of a, uh, a pedestrian environment for a place to stop and not, uh, be in that movement of pedestrian traffic as it's going through, but actually sit on benches. Um, you know, there'd be, uh, on-street furnishings, there'll be bike parking, there'll be all kinds of things that'll be associated with that. We tried to focus a lot of our main pedestrian environment into that south plaza at the building of the, uh, base of the residential tower. We think that that's a strong space in the heart of the development that hopefully captures activity from all of the buildings on the site, kind of being that apex of activity and movement. But it also relates well to an interior space that can bust out and be a multi, multipurpose space that can have a, a relationship to what's happening within that plaza and be a very flexible space that can be used for a variety of different events, um, not only daily, weekly, but monthly, um, as part of this environment. So, um, I, I, you know, you could potentially pull the buildings back inside. So, um, I, I, you know, you could potentially pull the buildings back in size, but really what's happening here with the architecture is we're fitting the area plan guidelines within that realm and it's kind of been designed to reflect that. So hopefully, some of the smaller, yeah, this is a great plan to show it actually, Neil, you can kind of begin to see how these bump outs begin to work around, um, the car parking on the street. So, um, I think within this environment, if you were to take out the car parking and just have that as purely pedestrian, I don't know if you'd see a lot of people using that in between the space of buildings. It is actually a circulator space, that's more so than a pedestrian space to kind of loiter, um, and spend a ton of time. It kind of moves you back and forth through the development. So, I don't know if that helps answer your question, I think, um, you know, our main goal here was to try and accomplish what was pointed out in the area guidelines.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. And then to, to piggyback on that, Commissioner Bennett, um, you asked about the car, are we enhancing the car here? And I'll refer to Mick Johnson's, uh, third paragraph about, um, the development team is about to order a design that manages the presence of the car in the public realm, parking parked above grade or below grade, around a program of face, space facing the public realm. And I believe over 98% of our parking is included within the buildings. Um, and the street parking provides a method for patrons that are servicing the retail, maybe making a quick visit to someone in one of the residential, uh, pieces and Uber drop-off or pickup, uh, and eats, drop-off or pickup, and really provides that flexibility for quick in-and-outs. So, in addition to the traffic calming, uh, we believe that, you know, modern self-profession support with some limited parallel parking on the street. And again, these street sizes and typologies were, uh, pulled directly from the designer guidelines.
Yeah, thank you for your response. I, you know, and I guess as I look at these and, you know, we follow the design experience guidelines, I don't, I don't think any of us, especially me, have an issue with the on-street parking. I think it's the way in which it's presented and, um, maybe just accentuated, um, you know, the actual drivelines are, you know, that's 26 feet, that's a lot, and it, it doesn't need to be. Um, I think the, the parking side, that may be an eight and a half feet, that seems pretty standard, but that could even be shrunk just a hair and/or it could be treated with different material or something. Uh, you know, a lot of what we talked about is, you know, slowing the car down, making it pretty apparent that, you know, we want these interior streets to be focused on the pedestrian more than the car. And not like a blue roof necessarily, but I'm just not getting it from the visual. So, I mean, that's what I'd like to see more of is, you know, a difference in materials between the driveline and the, the, a tighter, tighter on-street or the tighter drivelines. Um, you know, that, that alone, I think, you know, it's, it's like if you have a wide angle and people are still, are still parking, I mean, it's still a wide lane, so if it's open, people will go faster, so. Um, and, and a lot of that kind of marries up with some of the comments of the overall height of these buildings, um, with the 24-story tower, like, giving a lot of height to fit a lot more things in, and I'm just not seeing the open space at the ground level accordingly enough to satisfy my gut. And I guess where I do see it is the US Bank site with a lot of parking, and so it just seems like we're, we're waiting for that site to redevelop again in the future, but that's such an unknown that, I mean, it made it feel more content, I, I need to see something more now. And I think we're really close, it's just something's missing there. And again, I, I don't know if it's just not enough green space or if it's not like, uh, you know, a distinct difference in, in the materials that make it apparent that, that road's not so wide or it doesn't have to feel that way? Or maybe it's how the buildings actually front the sidewalk, um, I know just the actual shape of the buildings are matching what the guidelines say, but again, in Minnesota with, with the cold and the weather, I mean, I'd expect some sort of overhangs or something to be over those, just make it feel like it's, it's gonna cater to the pedestrian a little more. So, those are just, you know, recommendations and I guess just comments after what we're seeing here, um, regarding the green space. And I guess, um, the second question I have is, I know we talked about it last time and I was kind of on the fence, but I think my fellow commissioners, um, adequately convinced me about the US Bank site being 50 feet off of France. Can we answer as to why that site can't be compacted on the interior side to have that brought more than to be flush with the 50-foot offset or setback?
Yeah, this is, this is Jeff Heslin with RSP. Um, one of the key aspects, and again, it kind of ties into the prior question about the drive-through and the parking, the key piece, and I think one other element here is with the setback being defined, defined by France Avenue, um, the element that you see on the screen right now is actually a community space, and that's intended to be an amenity that's available for the citizens of Edina. And with that, making sure that there's visibility and proximity that, that with the context of also having sightlines from the northbound traffic and the adjacent building with the building height, um, it's kind of a combination of making sure it provides the proper amount of parking that's required for this. And again, as this is the, one of the top five performing banks, it's a high-volume bank, and making sure that there's ample queuing. As COVID has really kind of taken on over the last eight months, they have found drastically across the nation that they have had substantial increases on the utilization of the drive-throughs. So those components have really set the fixed dimension of how the site plan is oriented and definitely critical to their, to the operational of their business.
Okay, yeah, no, that, that I guess answers, uh, your stance on it. I, I think I'm still, I'm still convinced that we need to bump that back and allow for a better connection as we look to the future of France Avenue, because if that building's there, all does well and it continues to do well, it's not likely gonna change too much for a while. And if France continues to change elsewhere, we have an interesting situation there, especially with new drive or the new turn lane into the site, making it even more, more narrow distance between the building and France. And I guess, you know, with, with how tight that sidewalk is there, if anyone's walked along those sidewalks when they're close to France, it's not, not a good experience. That's something that the design experience is really trying to get away from, even sidewalk between the boulevard, I mean, it pretty much professes to have that sidewalk close to the building. So I just said, another question, why going through the, the boulevard trees versus, you know, closer to the inside of them will be, uh, another answer I'd like to hear.
Uh, Commissioner Bennett and, and, uh, maybe Director Teague, uh, if Mike Spack is still available, maybe Mike could shed some context on the development of this right turn lane because France is a county road. So we had a lot of input through the county on ingress and egress out of France, on truck and vehicle circulation, but Mike, if it's appropriate, could you touch on, with, that might be helpful?
Yep, happy to help, Ted. Obviously, France Avenue is a, a big arterial, uh, relieving pressure from Highway 100. And, uh, with the high traffic volumes, uh, at these kind of access points, it's standard to put in right turn lanes, uh, for safety reasons to get those turning vehicles out of that through traffic. Um, so on a corridor like this, that's just standard operating procedure, and, uh, we support that. And, and this driveway access is very important to the development, uh, with 70th and France already being a congested area, this relieves pressure, uh, from that key intersection.
Okay, I, I suppose I maybe wasn't clear. I don't, I don't have a problem with the turn-in whatsoever, it's just the point that pushing the building closer to France and having that access there creates a pinch point with that 50-foot setback that we normally see landscape with the sidewalk. Now it's 20 feet more narrow there, so that, that's just, that's an issue for me with this development. And, I mean, the US Bank site, I mean, alone, we're, we're compromising a lot of density for redevelopment, and I'm not seeing a great amount in the public, um, besides, you know, a lot of surface parking or materials, um, because of it. And, you know, planning based off of this pandemic is not what my vision is for Edina or this area, it's, you know, for what's after this pandemic and what's, what's to come. And people will soon not use their car as much to do the drive-through because that's safe right now, but what's the long-term play for this? And I think I can support having that building stick out and compromising, um, the future of our connections. I guess that, that's it for my comments and questions right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Other commissioners, I don't know if we've heard from everyone, not everyone has to. Commissioner Strauss, so it looks like you're, would you like to speak, Jerry? Good?
I'm fine, thanks.
Yeah, no, you're, you're good. Any other commissioners have anything? Commissioner Olson, did you have anything you'd like to bring up? Joanne?
If you do, if any of you do, I, I, I have a few questions, um, that I will ask, and other commissioners can have an opportunity, then we'll open up to the public. Um, first of all, one of the questions that we received from the community that Planner Teague addressed at the end of his presentation was, what, what's in this for Edina? What's in this for us? And, uh, I was wondering if the applicant could take a swing at that.
Uh, sure, uh, thank you. Um, what, what's in it for the city of Edina is removal of a building that's 45-plus years old, it's surface parked, no sustainability, um, just a throwback to a, a, a long time ago. And upgrading the site with, with the development that is aligned with the South Dill area guidelines, that were constructed with a lot of time, effort, thought, and citizen and community and city input. So, this is a fulfillment of the, of the intent of these design guidelines, uh, brought to life to carry Edina into the 21st century and beyond. And Edina is this corridor, is this corridor of commerce, it's a corridor of living, and it's corridor of places to have fun and be engaged in the community. And that's really, Commissioner Navarro, what we've tried to do here is bring all of those different elements to light. Uh, we have a project, we've done with 150,000 square feet of office space and a potential 40,000 more square feet on the first floor. We have the potential to bring, you know, 300-plus new families or existing families, additional housing options within Edina. And, uh, we've got an opportunity for US Bank to modernize their operations at, uh, one of their top performance stores within their, within their entire retail operation. So, um, you know, we, we believe that, uh, this, this development, um, is, is very closely aligned with the intent of the community and city, one of these design guidelines and everything else.
Carlson, I'm gonna use a, uh, entry-level business term. Do you think that this project will create or, or, or have or create some kind of synergy that old, boy, nobody likes that word anymore, but with the, with the other parts of the district?
Well, we should.
And if you do, what kinds of things do you think could happen?
Well, I, I, I think what it does, and, uh, Neil, maybe if you put up the connector slide, um, you know, we've got, we've got pages and pages of notes from our community meeting and our stretch plan, and, and we heard, uh, the word "super block" and "set precedent" and "create something with aspiration and innovation." And, and really, I think we accomplished those things within this project. Um, we hope that this is a template for other sites that are 30, 40, 50-plus years old that are surface parked without sustainability measures, without stormwater measures, without any thought towards pedestrian movement or travel. Uh, it, it's really an opportunity, we think, to, um, set a great standard for a lot of those things that I just mentioned. So, um, that's really was our, as our design team came up with a theme for this project, it was aspiration and innovation.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Um, let's see, a couple other things. Here, here's a very specific question. So, on the bike parking map, we looked at it just briefly, but it didn't appear there was any, there was bike parking next to the bank. I wonder if you could bring that up?
I, I can clarify that there are six bike, bike, uh, stalls right by the entrance, the primary entrance, it just didn't make it onto this diagram.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Um, I didn't specifically allude to those in that diagram, um, but I can bring up the, uh, the site plan we were looking at before, um, and, um, sh- show kind of, uh, that, that area here, so.
Well, if you, if you say there are six places, I'm good. Right by the bank. Yeah, where, where will they be then? Uh, right there. Okay. That's great, that's great. Um, more generally, parking, you know, the, the parking, as, as one of the, as at least one of the commissioners was quite, uh, discussing before, and i- is, uh, the idea of parking in these developments is undergoing change. Um, so I have a very high-level question for you. I assume you're comfortable with all the parking, you know, so there is no other, there, there's no place for spillover parking to go off your property really, so you're comfortable that you'll be able to have all the parking you need here?
Yes.
And, and does that include parking for, uh, people with disabilities, uh, charging, electrical char, you know, electric charging, uh, Uber-type drives, emergency services? Do you have sufficient spaces for those?
I can, uh, respond to that question, uh, Chair. Um, yes, it absolutely does for all of those, those things you mentioned, um, the adequate amount of accessible stalls, uh, for, um, the retail parking, for the office parking, as well as the components of residential parking are all there. Um, with respect to drop-off, we would have the ability for residential, um, rideshare drop-offs, uh, even within the building, uh, at Site A that serves that large number of housing units. We additionally have a front door entry which, um, was shown in, um, at least one rendering where there would be a drop-off zone along 70th, I'll bring that up shortly. Um, that would be right here. Um, and then lastly, um, I think your, sorry, your other, your third component there, I, I lost, uh, lost that one.
Emergency services.
Emergency services, yeah. The, um, uh, I think there was a preliminary review with the city, I'll, I'll let staff respond maybe more specifically to that if there's, if there's other things to mention, but just the creation of the grid streetblock pattern allows for each building to be served from numerous sides, uh, in terms of emergency services. And then we've, uh, planning and will plan accordingly for any type of, uh, you know, fire control access, command rooms, that, those types of, uh, components, uh, within each building.
Yeah, and then, and then there was another one around, uh, uh, enabled access, as I like to call it, and we are compliant with the enabled access requirements, uh, per building.
And, uh, and then if it's something like, things like ambulances, is that off-street? Is that within development or is that, you know, we, we obviously'd want to avoid ambulance and fire on 70th or on France?
Uh, yeah, I suspect that they would access the site, um, whatever it needed to do to function frankly.
Yep. Um, so for instance, at, um, at the pull-through on the backside of the lobby on Site A, um, I think there would be the possibility that, uh, emergency vehicle like an ambulance would have the, the potential clearance to get through there. Um, we haven't specifically dove into that, but I, I would imagine some of that you would just, um, out of its nature happen on the street, but some of it is poss- possibility of happening within some of the open pull-throughs on the back sides of the, of, for instance, that Site A.
Well, I suppose, yeah, I suppose if the emergency vehicles think it's best that they park on those streets, that they'll park on those streets, but as long as you think that there is sufficient room, um, I think that's going to be an increasing trend of concern as we move to, as the world morphs, and I don't know what's gonna happen over... I think that's going to be an in- increasing trend of concern as we move to, a- as the world morphs and I don't know what's gonna happen over five years or twenty years, but, um, I think there's going to be less parking in these kinds of locations. But you're still gonna make sure you have adequate parking for ride-share and emergency and that sort of thing. Uh, two further, two final questions, the bank development, uh, Planner Teague talked about trans-seventy-five percent transparency. Uh, is that, does the bank meet that?
Uh, that, that's a great question, uh, Commissioner Nemirov, Commissioner Nemirov. Uh, Section twenty of the, uh, following conditions would need modification. This is frankly, not only for the bank, but for all of the buildings. The seventy-five percent transparency is almost physically impossible to achieve, but our team is comfortable regarding building materials. Um, and again, we further define that at site plan review, but, um, with energy codes and other requirements, frankly, operational requirements, seventy-five percent, um, glass is very difficult to achieve. Is that fair, Neil and Jeff?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll talk about that later, I suppose. Then finally, um, uh, back to the drive-throughs, one thing that, one, 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 one issue that was suggested at the, at the, um, sketch plan review regarding idling is Commissioner, uh, Cullen brought up earlier. Um, I wanna revisit that. I was on a, I was, attended a program this morning where Jamie Dimon, the CEO of JP Morgan Chase, called for a carbon tax. And, uh, he thinks the time is right to begin implementing carbon taxes. So, and I know that US Bank has environmental, um, goals, both objective and subjective, things that wants to achieve and, and reputation that it wants to burnish regarding environmental, uh, doing the right thing for the environment. Uh, one thing that was brought up is encourage, you know, having the bank encourage people w- waiting at the drive-throughs to turn off their motor. Uh, this isn't really a land-use thing, although today, although it could become one in the future. And uh, so I'm mostly speaking personally here, but US Bank is a, is, is a, you know, is a very important company in the Twin Cities. They have many drive-through lanes throughout the Twin Cities. I was trying to do some back-of-the-envelope-in-my-head kinds of calculations. I figure, well, if they, if they get three hundred drivers, three hundred cars a day and each car is, you know, could take five minutes, depending on lines, could take more than five minutes. Um, at one, you know, three hundred per, three hundred cars per site, and I have no idea what the right number is, but five minutes seemed about right. You know, sometimes it's faster, sometimes it's less, depending on how busy it is, but I'm saying that's fifteen hundred minutes a day of car idling at one site, then you multiply that by the number of sites throughout the Twin Cities, before you know, we, you know, you're having them, uh, you know, some kind of environmental impact. And it's also the kind of thing I, 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 that starts changing a culture, starts improving a culture. It's, it's a cost-free way of, uh, addressing environmental goals. And again, it's not currently a land-use issue. I think it will be in, it very well may be in the future, but I was wondering if, if you had the opportunity to discuss with US Bank that idea of, you know, encouraging their people using the drive-through to turn off their engine while they're waiting.
Um, I guess I can probably speak a little more to, uh, some of the understanding of the, the importance of the drive-throughs, um, but I, I, I would probably wanna go back to our client and get a little better understanding of their philosophy, um, on how that might be implemented as far as procedurally. Think that's the best I can answer at this moment.
It's good. Um, that's good. And obviously, you know, if, if we all get rid of our carburetor engine automobiles and move to electric, uh, that could, that could change in the future, but it, but it would be good. I, I think it's a good opportunity for US Bank to get ahead of this issue. Uh, I think, I think personally that it's, this is probably a, a nicer statement than telling your customers you're calling for a carbon tax. Um, but it would be good to see and, and maybe it's, maybe it's something that we'll discuss later when we, uh, discuss the approval for the project. So with that, that's the end of my questions. Do any other commissioners have questions? Or should we open this up to the public? I don't see anyone's hand, so if you have, if any commissioners have anything, just, just say so.
I do.
Have at it.
Commissioner Miranda, okay, thank you, Chairman Nemirov. Um, so, uh, I looked at some of the details. So, okay, so the developers have said that parking, street parking slows traffic, which is true, you know, I've, I've read that and researched that. Um, which is why there's, there's street parking here and that's all fine. Um, to get back to some of my questions and then, um, uh, Jimmy's questions about, uh, street width, the internal streets. Um, cause you also said that you, um, were using the Design Experience Guidelines for the street topology. And, um, so not only does parking slow traffic, but driveline width also affects traffic speed. So I looked at the guidelines that are included in this packet and on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine, it talks specifically about these kinds of streets, which are called new local streets. Um, and they show a street, a total street width of sixty feet. And that includes the sidewalks, the drivelines, and the parking lane. If you start dividing that up, it, it also shows specifically twelve feet for the sidewalk. And I know you're including furniture, furnishing space or whatever in that. Um, but if you take twelve feet on, on each side, that's twenty-four feet. So you're left with, what, thirty-six feet? Okay, and then, um, parking lanes are narrower than driveline, so I assume they'd be about eight feet wide. So that's sixteen feet, now you're down to twenty feet. So what this is showing is drivelines that are ten feet wide as opposed to, to what you were describing, which was a twenty-six-foot-wide driveline area, which would be thirteen feet. That's a huge difference. I mean, thirteen feet would be, I don't know if that's highway speed, but it would certainly be a very fast, very fast road. Um, and I wonder if you would commit to, to ten-foot-wide drivelines the way it says in the Design Experience Guidelines?
Um, I, is, is, I don't know that it would commit right now, Commissioner Miranda, to ten-foot drivelines. Uh, I would want, I would ask Mike Spack and Engineering to weigh in and from when they're available on driveway. I think it's probably okay going from thirteen feet to twelve feet to mimic what the, uh, East Rust, uh, Seventy-first Street is. But, um, you know, we, I'm trying to think of what, how wide Sunny Side is with, um, parking on East Side. I know it's significantly wider as a reference point, but I don't know the exact mention. So, um, Mike, Jerry would be, would need to ask Mike Spack about road widths, or maybe that's not his value, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I'm, he'd weigh in on that and it is within the range of reasonable. Uh, I certainly won't, wouldn't wanna see it narrower than twenty and I wouldn't wanna see it wider than twenty-eight. Um, so I feel like we're straddling in there. Um, and it's a balancing act that we do want some mobility through here. So, uh, but I wasn't involved with the, the site planning and design, so I, I guess I don't wanna make hard and fast recommendation, um.
So, we're back.
The Design Experience Guidelines, pretty much looking at that diagram, are pretty much talking about ten-foot-wide lanes, driveline. So if you're, if we're sticking to that, then I think that should be something that, I mean, I, I'm not saying you have to commit to it now, we can certainly make it a requirement when we pass or not pass this tonight, but um, it's something that I think is very important and I think it's actually called out in there, so, um, it's just something I noticed. And then the other thing is, if you go a couple pages earlier in the Design Experience Guidelines, they show, and I think Commissioner Bennett, uh, alluded to this also, and they're talking specifically about France Avenue. They, they show a fifty-foot setback and the, the sidewalk is adjacent to the building, not adjacent to the street. I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of ludicrous, the, the, the image of the bank with that public space area outside it, which is directly adjacent to France Avenue, I mean, that is not going to be used. Um, it's just, uh, absurd to think that anybody, you know, on France where cars are going at least forty miles an hour, that anyone's gonna find that to be a, a pleasant space to use. So, um, I think the sidewalks really need to be closer to the building and not anywhere near the street. I mean, the, you know, again, the Design Experience Guidelines clearly show something very different from what you guys have proposed, so if we're gonna stick to those, I think that's something we should do.
Yeah, and it, you know, I think Commissioner Miranda, you know, and, and we speak to this is that we're, we're something also for the, what I would call the underbelly of development, which is the operations. And, and moving trucks in and out, moving e- emergency vehicles in and out, and doing so in a super grid system or a super block system. And, and we've spent a lot of time with Westwood studying that in conjunction with, uh, uh, Director Miller and Engineering and Director Teague. And so, uh, frankly, um, I think our intent is to align with these guidelines as close as possible, still maintain some operational functionality, so, um, you know, I, I want you to know that we've made strong efforts to satisfy, um, Engineering and, um, other ways to access the building and all, fire line safety, remove this trash, along those lines.
Okay, I mean, these, these are, you know, internal streets, they're not, you know, it's not Seventieth or, or France, I mean, in terms of, we're not gonna be having emergency vehicles be going at fast speeds on these, we shouldn't have anything going fast on these streets. I mean, the city of Edina, like all other cities in Minnesota, is now looking at reducing their speeds to twenty miles per hour or so. Um, on non, non-county streets and such. So, um, I, you know, we wanna design these streets to be, uh, so that cars can't go fast on them. I mean, something related to that, which, um, I don't see here, I think I might have mentioned it at the last meeting. Um, you know, especially if you're gonna have that turn lane from France Avenue into, you know, Seventy-first Street, where you have a separated space for cars there, so that they could slow down considerably. One thing that could be done would be to keep the sidewalk, keep the pedestrian area level as across as Seventieth Street, rather, or Seventy-first Street, rather than going down to the street level. The street would come up to the sidewalk and that would force cars to slow down considerably when they go around that corner. Um.
Uh, Commissioner Miranda, you're, you're suggesting a raised, uh, pedestrian crossing at that location?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, uh, the, the team would be happy to look into that with our, with our civil engineer and, uh, consider the possibilities. Uh, and of course, working with the county and city traffic engineers.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, I was just gonna add, I know, um, we're working on a couple other projects where it would be good to check what the fire truck requirements are for a street width. I know we're working on a project currently where twenty-six is minimum for an internal street of a development even, uh, as compared to, um, a twenty-foot width. And I know there is parking, but they don't take that into consideration, so it might be interesting to ask uh, the fire marshal exactly what his minimum, minimum street requirements would be for Ewing as well.
And in fact, um, it's contained in the Fire Marshal, um, memo dated November second, it's included with the packet, that access roads meet the angle approach and department for a fire department apparatus and support your powers. Um, so that's where I go with the width that our streets came from, was interaction with, um, um, David Fisher, uh, Rick Henry Schmidt, and, um, Chad Miller on the width of the internal street.
Did you say that document mentions that or, or?
Yeah, I believe it was included in the submission and it's, um, the fourth bullet point.
It is, that, that's provided in the packet. It's the memo from the fire chief and the building official. I might wanna just remind the commission, um, there, it's getting rather late and we have a, probably quite a few residents uh, waiting for the public hearing. We can continue this, um, more discussion on the detail of the plan perhaps after the public hearing.
Hey, this is all I wanted to mention, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Other commissioners, good? Anyone else have anything at this moment? I, I, I can't see anyone right now, so, um, so with that, thank you, um, we're gonna go to the public portion, law, law public, uh, residents of the public, members of the public to comment on this matter. And so I have a few things to say. Uh, first of all, the standard, standard information, if you wish to, if you wish to make a comment, please call one eight-hundred-three-seven-four-zero-two-two-one. Use conference ID number two-seven-seven-six-one-seven-eight and press star one, you'll be placed into queue. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. Um, we ask that you try not to duplicate what other people say, but when you, and by the way, when you do come, when you're coming closer and you hit the three minutes, staff will let you know that you've run out of time. Um, I'd also like to say something that I haven't said before, for the most part, and I, I wanna add this. And I want people to understand it. Um, uh, and I have, I have three general comments to make. First of all, uh, the members of the Planning Commission are all volunteers. We come from a, uh, we, we take this very seriously, we come from a diverse background. Uh, I personally, uh, this is, I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm in my sixth year, my, on the commission, my, it's my first year as chair. I think it's a great group of people really trying to do the right thing for the city of Edina. Uh, everyone has, you know, like I mentioned, we have diverse backgrounds and outlooks. Uh, we all take our roles seriously and it's trying to, we're all trying to do a good job. We, for this matter, we have received, for the matters tonight, we've received a lot of comments. Uh, and more than we typically do, but we have, uh, we've had other meetings where we've received a lot of comments also. And I know from experience that the members of the Planning Commission review those comments carefully. And you should be comfortable that they do. Um, now, we receive pro comments, we receive con comments. Um, I don't, just because, so at the end of the night, we're gonna take a vote and vote for approval or disapproval. Our vote doesn't re, our vote doesn't reflect which comments we paid attention to. We may, you know, there is, there is nuance and all these things. There may be pro-co, some of the votes against us might have been very interested in a pro-comment and vice versa. Some of the votes for it may have found three concerns raised by the public that were very interesting and still voted for the, votes for the project for other reasons. Now, your feedback is very important. We get a lot of good information and, and even tonight, you, starting with Planner Teague's discussion, staff was responding to some of the comments that have been raised by the public, so thank you very much. And others have been raised already this evening by, uh, commission members. So your con, your input is very important to us. We want you to, we want your input, we also want you to feel like your input is important to us and that you are treated fairly. Uh, a few months ago, for a residential matter, we received a lot of feedback and we had a long discussion and, and we went back and forth about how to put together the resolution. We eventually acted on the resolution. A few days later, we received a letter from a citizen saying, "Well, you didn't vote the way I wanted you to vote, but it was really clear that you heard what I was thinking and considered that, and I appreciate what you did." And, and we were really grateful for that letter. So, in addition to giving your feedback tonight, and a lot of you have provided feedback in writing already, I want you to feel comfortable providing feedback after the meeting if you feel it's necessary. Whether you feel like we did listen to you or whether you feel like there were things we could have done to improve how we reviewed your comment or even received your comment. Your comment's important to us and your feedback is important. So that, that is everything I have to say. So, um, I will ask staff at this time if we have anybody who's called in and wishes to say, to, uh, give, uh, some comments tonight.
Good evening, Chair Nemirov and members of the commission. Um, this is-
Good evening, Chair Nemirov and members of the Commission, um, this is Communications Director Jennifer Bennerott. Um, we do have a handful of people on the call tonight, no one has, uh, indicated a desire to speak at this point. For those who are listening in, just a reminder, um, in order to get into the queue to speak, you must press star one on your telephone keypad, that's the asterisk sign, number one, not the pound sign, um, and that will indicate your desire to speak and put you in the queue. Um, with that, I do see that we have a caller, our first caller tonight is Julie Risser. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Julie Risser? And then Julie, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Julie, your line is now open.
Okay, my name, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
Okay, my name is Julie Risser, I live at sixty-one twelve Ashcraft Avenue in Edina. I was a former planning, I was a planning commissioner, and I do wanna thank you for your service. I'm calling because I am really concerned about, I'll call it the elephant in the room. You are a voluntary body of Edina residents, you're being asked to consider and vote on a development that is non-compliant with current zoning. Yes, you will vote before you vote on the plan on changing the zoning, but you're advisory, you're not legislative, that changes nothing. And, um, I think in this particular case, this is particularly important because we're talking about changing the zoning from PCD three to PUD. And there are parcels of land in the Southdale area that were zoned PUD after the comprehensive planning process, which involved many people from the community, a lot of time energy, taxpayer dollars, supporting that effort. And I think part of the unease that many people in the community feel is that this process is really not compliant with expectations. And as I've looked at how this plan has developed, um, the developer first came forward with a proposal that appears to have met or reflected PCD three zoning, and then after presenting that to City Council, it was encouraged to go back and to come up with something more grand. And I would like to just underscore the reality that Council is tasked with specific code of contact, conduct, um, complying with the law, all right? And that's not just state law, it's municipal law. And so, when you have a developer coming forward, and you've got Council encouraging something grander, and then the developer comes back with ten stories, and then comes back with fourteen and twenty-four, um, it really is messaging that it's not necessary to follow established zoning. And my big concern, I mean, I think that's a problem, because I think it really does undermine confidence in the comprehensive plan and zoning laws, it raises ambiguity. Uh, you can say, okay, not a big deal to put a twenty-four-story building tower on land zone for eight stories, but, you know, on the other hand, when you look at the comp plan and you look at the building height overlay, and you see that there's this space where it's supposed to be eight stories, you know, and you kinda wonder, gosh, I wonder if anyone who has property there will ever put solar panels up, 'cause you don't know if something's gonna pop up in a year or two that's gonna completely block those. So, you know, that's just one example of a problem. The other example is that if you have Council encouraging a specific site to go beyond established code, does that mean, you know, every other parcel should expect that same kind of favorable treatment, which really does bump up the land value? So, I really feel for you tonight, because I feel like, at the end of the day, you know, you're gonna vote on changing the zoning, but then you're moving on to a proposal, and it's still a hypothetical, you haven't changed the zoning. Why are you spending so much time with a hypothetical project? And it needs to be a process where things are done in order, the cart is before the horse, it doesn't make sense. I don't think it's respectful to the Planning Commission, I don't think it's respectful to you, I don't think it's respectful to the citizens of Edina. And, um, the other thing that I'm really concerned about is that if indeed any parcel can be PUD, and you can get more and more of these towers, that really is raising the potential amount of residents in the Southdale area.
Thank you, we're at three minutes.
And, and I'm wondering, okay, um, if we get to this part of Edina being twenty percent of the population, we need to restructure how representation is established, 'cause we can't just have a large number.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Rissel, thank you.
I'll stop.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
We're gonna let other people, thank you very much, though. Uh, Ms. Bennerott, do we have?
Okay, have a good one, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Bennerott, do we have other people in queue?
Um, I do not have anyone in the queue right now, I do have one other person on the line, just a reminder to that person and anyone who might be calling in, to get into the queue to speak, please press star one on your telephone keypad, um, that, that will, that will get you in the queue and get you introduced. Um, that is still not happening, so, because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I would recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on. Uh, my clock shows that it's nine thirty-six, so I will let you know if I have someone in the queue or nine thirty-seven, whichever comes first.
Thank you. So, a couple of things, first of all, uh, I just wanna repeat the phone number, one eight hundred three seven four zero two two one, conference ID two seven seven six one seven eight. We received a lot of correspondence in writing through the city's website today, we, or this week, we also received a lot of comments on Better Together, the city's, uh, online forum. We've tried to address a lot of them along the way. Uh, Ms. Bennerott, if you could let us know when you feel like we've waited?
It is now nine thirty-seven, and I do not have anyone in the queue, so I think, think it's safe for you to close the public hearing and move on.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
In a second.
Good day.
Uh, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote to close the public hearing, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Brubey?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye, thank you, Ms. Olson. And so, now we have a, an opportunity for Planning Commission discussion, uh, before we do, I, I actually have a question for Planner Teague of the city. So, we did, we, I, I, I thought we were gonna get more calls on this, but we got one, and, uh, one of, you know, I'm looking at the call, so, one of the core comments raised by the caller, Ms. Risser Carey, was that, um, we, you know, we really shouldn't be doing something different than the zoning, and I guess there was a subsidiary comment that the, uh, the zoning reflects the expectation of the community, yeah, can you, can you address that, address those comments?
Uh, well, certainly, so, this request doesn't need a comprehensive plan amendment, you know, we, we guide this site for, you know, maximum densities, um, being up to the hundred and fifty, uh, units per acre, it's, it's within those, and the, the use of the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan as well. So, within that Southdale study, it was identified that perhaps we're going to vary from certain base zoning district requirements. In order for the city to consider that, we have this PUD process, where, um, in order to achieve a development that exceeds our development, our, our base zoning, there are certain things we're after. One of those main things is consistency with the, with the Design Experience Guidelines, um, and the criteria that's outlined in the PUD. So, that's the decision that the Planning Commission and ultimately the City Council has to make, is, is there enough here to justify changing the zoning, writing a new zoning ordinance for the site, is there enough public benefit, um, to support that, that zoning? You have the ability to say no, if you believe that the height's not appropriate, if the density's not appropriate, um, it's one of those difficult, uh, decisions. We do have, uh, the Southdale, um, the large area plan, the comprehensive plan, and those Design Experience Guidelines that help assist you with this, uh, difficult decision.
Do any of the members of the Planning Commission have any further questions or any comments you'd like to share? This is our opportunity to discuss this matter, eventually we're going, you know, at some point during deliberations, someone's gonna make a motion to approve or deny, and, you know, but, who'd like, does anyone have any comments they'd like to share at this point?
I, I have a comment.
Great, Joanne.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi. Well, just so, I agree with what Jimmy said earlier, I, I want them to maintain that fifty-foot setback along France Avenue. I mean, just looking at their site plan where we have such a beautiful boulevard in front of the rest of the development, and then it just goes down to kinda nothing, and sidewalk right by France, um, I understand what they're trying to do, but, you know, I hope they understand what we're trying to do too with our overall Southdale plan. So, that would be my first comment. The second one, the public space that is directly south of the, um, taller building, I guess, again, tying into kinda what Jimmy was saying, I'd like to see that be more of a green space, grassy, open area than, it looks like it's more, you know, kind of just, uh, architecturally, you know, stone or, you know, not, not, not just a nice little park area, we really need to maintain some park areas in the Southdale area, so, um, but I really like what they've done, you know, from the first time we've seen it, I think they really have tried to address a lot of our comments, and, um, yeah, that's what I've got right now, thank you.
Commissioner Agnew?
Yeah, I'll, I'll share some of my thoughts. Um, first, thank you again for the work that you've put into this and for coming back to present. It's clear, you've heard some of our feedback, we met back August, and overall, I really like the direction that this is headed in, and I think, I think it's getting close. Um, I especially appreciate adding the north-south, um, throughfare, um, ability, uh, in the future. Yeah, I am disappointed to see that the removal of the median didn't result in more green space and sidewalk space, and you addressed this in your response to Commissioner Miranda's, I believe, uh, his query, um, but I'd like to see wider sidewalks and more green space, and I would like less of a focus on the on-street parking, and, you know, maybe to Ian's point, some of that could be used, um, for exclusive drop-off zones. Um, while I believe that the Design Experience Guidelines were missed in some sense, it's really from that, that perspective of the overall green space, um, as well as creating pedestrian-centered mooners, um, if we're fortunate to get, you know, something like a coffee shop or a restaurant, um, and I think honestly even COVID highlights the, the power of outdoor seating, um, not that, that was ever in question in Minnesota, anyway, but I think that we're gonna see a real need for a substantial sidewalk space. Um, everything should be done to emphasize alternative modes of transportation, for example, a shared residential car, something fancy like a Tesla maybe, could even further incentivize residents to reduce the number of cars and reduce the requirement for upfront parking. Again, providing too much parking will result in increased traffic congestion, which remains a high concern in this area, and increased traffic also increases greenhouse gas emissions and contributes to climate change, and I know we've talked about the environmental impacts here. Um, I'm also disappointed to see that the number of parking stalls at the US Bank, um, increased from twenty-seven to thirty-two, when a lot of my feedback, um, was centered around parking reductions, and so I know we saw some increase. Um, ultimately, I, I don't believe that I can improve this as is, I'm not comfortable with the changes to the setbacks, um, there should be a fifty-foot setback across this entire development, um, I'm not arguing that there shouldn't be a turn lane there off of France, um, it's just that the setback really needs to be adjusted accordingly. Um, so, overall, that's, that's where my mind's at right now.
Commissioner Strauss, did you have a comment to issue?
Yes, uh, I, I'm gonna go through, kinda quickly, I, I think it's clear that, that, that the developers, you know, listened to the, you know, the, the comments that were made, um, previous reviews and stuff like that, and came back with a very, I think, a very sincere, and, and I think, for the most part, accomplished, um, uh, you know, what we, we, we had shared with them. Um, to me, I, I think the critical wa, was the acknowledgement of how this project conforms with the, the Design, um, Experience Guidelines, both by staff and, and, uh, the Architectural Field Office. I think those, to me, were, were critical, uh, reviews, um, and, and that, the, the, the one, um, example of how this project develops and fits into this development of the super block, you know, not, not only, not only talking about the project itself, but how it is the key and important first step in, you know, three and four and five blocks away, it's, it, it, how, how, how important is it to have a project of this size set and hit all these targets for us, um, versus having this great blueprint and the first thing out of the, out of the block changes it? So, it never happens, so, to me, it's exciting, I think this gets, gets us on the way, and, um, the other questions, density, parking, I think those questions were answered, I think, you know, I think they, they were, uh, the, the, the developers commented that, you know, there's a lot of stakeholders that have, whose interests have to be balanced in this, I mean, that's an important criteria, so, um, for what housing, uh, is being met, that's an important goal. So, I'm, I'm for, I'm, I guess I will approve. Thank you.
Commissioner Cullen, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I just had a brief comment on the, um, drive-throughs, and I think it's an important point that, you know, we're setting a precedent, and really, I was wondering if there, you know, is any possibility to kind of cut back on the amount of drive-throughs or e, even the parking spaces there, just because I understand that there's gonna be, you know, electrical cars in the future, but ultimately, do we want to promote the idea of, you know, just using drive-throughs? I mean, it is one of the most used US Bank sites you, you guys mentioned, and I, I just think it's important to really realize what we're representing when we add drive-through sites here, um, I think it should be reconsidered, and I think the idea of, you know, encouraging cars to shut down their mo, motors is a good one, but ultimately, we should really think about what, what are we saying when we put these, um, drive-throughs, you know, in this, in this site and just the amount? So, that's, that's my only comment on this, I mean, my other thoughts have been repeated by other Commissioners, so.
Commissioner Cullen, uh, Commissioner Miranda, hello, Lou.
Hello, um, so, yeah, I, I think overall, this project is, is excellent, I mean, I probably come across as being hypercritical, but, um, I think I'm taking on such narrow things because I think overall, the project is really, is great, and I have no problem with the height, it's a great mixed use, um, uh, while the bank building is sort of questionable, a number of things about it, the sidewalk, the, as, uh, Commissioner Cullen says, the drive-throughs, um, it's, it's without a doubt kind of a blemish on the whole project, but I know the whole thing is primarily driven by the bank, so, um, and they're your customer, um, but really, I, you know, um, the rest of the project, I think, is, uh, is really top-notch, and I think it's a great project, I, the height and the shadows and whatnot are, are simply not an issue for me, where, where it's located, it's so far away from, you know, neighborhoods and single-family homes or anything, so, um, it really seems like a great project, but to really make it so, so from a physical space sort of thing, um, but, you know, the city is also consider, uh, considering things like, uh, you know, walkability, bikeability, um, equity, uh, sustainability. And I think that's where it's missing the mark. And as Commissioner Agnew mentioned, you know, the amount of parking, you're underparked compared to regulations, but those are so old that it's sort of relevant. But, you know, so it's great that you've gone below that. It's great that you have these internal streets and you realign them as was requested. So a lot of progress has been made, and I think it's really great. But we have to make sure that we give as much priority to pedestrians and cyclists. Even though it's along France Avenue and today, we, especially older people, can't see a future where people will be walking and biking. But it's coming, and we have to reduce the amount of energy that we use to get around. And because you've got so many people in this small space, we can't dedicate so much space to cars. So, so it sounds like little details, but things like street width, packs. I mean, the reason you're going to get people walking and biking is if it feels safe. If it doesn't feel safe, it's not going to happen. The city put in sidewalks in my neighborhood on 42nd Street a few years ago, and people ballyhooed it and thought it was a silly thing to do, and they don't want to give up space on their property, you know, even though it's not their property, blah, blah, blah. Once they put them in, there's so much more people walking and biking. And, I mean, families bike on the sidewalk, even though 42nd Street is not a busy street at all. It kind of, you know, goes into a T, which it didn't say in Willows Park. But it's that feeling of safety that people have that allows people, seniors, families, children, to walk and bike around. And if we're trying to drive that in this area, which I think the city is doing based on the Design Experience Guidelines, then things like street width, sidewalk placement, sidewalk width, these are all super, super critical. And so I support this project in terms of, you know, you can have the 24 stories, whatever. That does not bother me as long as we have an area that prioritizes pedestrians and cyclists. And I'm going to insist on, for me to vote for this, I'm going to insist on on street widths that are much narrower than what you have and things like that.
There, Miranda. Commissioner Bennett, I think everyone else, oh, Commissioner Barubi, you also, yes.
Yeah, very conveniently, I'll follow Commissioner Miranda. And just, that's, yeah, that's exactly what I would say. I think overall, you know, the presenters did a good job of explaining the need for density and the value from having that, you know, more height, and therefore you get more opportunity for pedestrian and cognitivity on the ground. But there is more that can be done to improve how I would imagine it'll feel on the ground. And rather than going through everything that Lou said, I'll just say, I support it, but I do think that there needs to be more emphasis on the pedestrian and, you know, perhaps narrowing the streets and adding more landscaping is the way to do that.
You spoke earlier, do you have anything you wanted to add or summarize? Commissioner Bennett, yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, I didn't hear if you were talking to me or something else. Yeah, no, um, thank you. I, you know, just to be quick about, I guess, my stance on all this is I support the overall project proposal and commend the awesome effort of what's being proposed. But as we've gotten into the finer details, there's certain specifics that are too far for me to compromise to ultimately support it tonight. So that's where I am with that. I want to leave with some comments for residents as well as the developers to help point toward a direction where I would support something. So first, just wanted to, I know Chair Nemrav mentioned how seriously we take this. I wanted to just commend all of the comments and discussions from neighbors for this project. It was probably the most that we've seen since we've had Better Together. I read through all of them, and it was very apparent that there are lots of things that lots of people like about this. And then there's the opposite, where there's lots of things that people don't like about this and don't support it. And I think that's what you're going to get with a diverse community. We're all a collection of different backgrounds, education, work experience, life experience, all this kind of stuff. So what kind of points me in the direction of supporting the overall goal of this project is, you know, I just take a second and think, what would Edina be without Southdale? Without Grandview, without Valley View Wooddale, without 50th and France? You know, it would just be like any random suburb, right? And what makes us so special as a city are these nodes. And why Southdale is incredible is the opportunity as we look to the future. When it was innovative, when it was developed. But now for all the neighbors that live close to it, as I live close to Grandview, there's this incredibly high value of living close to a place that you can walk or bike to and take care of all of your needs, groceries or education, et cetera. So what Southdale has opportunity is to become that, but on a bigger scale. And so this project is bringing us closer to that. And, you know, I look back to when I was first involved in the Planning Commission, and if I saw something with this height, I would have just been shocked and not understood how anyone could support something like that. But what I've come to understand is, you know, a site as large as Southdale, what we need are a bunch of multi-use areas so people have all the needs that they can walk through right there. And what that means is density. You need people to be there to support it, to patronize it. And then also for you as a close-by resident, you can walk there and enjoy and reap those benefits too. So I just wanted to say that to support the overall goal of this project, which I do support. So the height, the overall makeup of the development, I support. But as we get into the weeds with the public realm, which is where most of us are going to spend our time on this proposal, I, it's just, it's not enough pedestrian-focused. So a couple of tips again for pointing it in the direction I could support is narrowing that street width. I mean, 12 feet is a standard width for highway. So having 13 feet in there for a local street is unnecessary. If we have to achieve 26 feet, we need to revise our Design Experience Guidelines to match that. And maybe there's something more creative that can be done outside of the drivelanes, like add in a bike lane that's uncomfortably between the parking, something that can limit the path that the cars are going and enhance the distance and space that people can linger. So, you know, when I see this incredible height, I expect a lot more open space at the ground. So again, I see 60 feet as a minimum. Anything more should be dedicated to that public realm. And I could see 70 feet being between these buildings and that extra five feet on each side going to greater sidewalks for more patio space and more places to linger. And then just maintaining that 50-foot setback along France. That's just, that's what's got to happen for me. And the last thing is, I mentioned it as kind of a critical component last time, and that's sustainability. So tonight, we heard that it's part of a stormwater plan. But to be honest, I'm not seeing that in any of this. I'm not seeing that drive any of the design or the space or the experience. So that would have to be enhanced as well. And thank you.
Commissioner Bennett, all the commissioners, I think you all make very good comments. I understand all the issues. That said, after, I am ready to move forward with this. I will, I would approve this. I see all the issues you raised, but I, looking at this project as a whole, I think it'd be a great improvement to the area. I think that it will help, I think it'll be a nice project. It'll be an attractive project. It will have benefits to the retail district in Southdale, have benefits to getting transit in Southdale. And so I see the issues everyone's raising, but even with those, I would agree with this. One thing I wanted to talk about just also was the public perception and public expectation for the Southdale District. And, you know, I mean, I started going to Southdale Mall itself back when it had birds in cages and in the courtyard. And it was great, you know, and it was a wonderful experience. And then where, boy, I think, I think we're near where this project's going to go in, where the Pancake House is. I think there used to be a movie theater there. Carrie, is that where the movie theater was? In the bowling alley? I mean, it was a great suburban experience. I mean, I saw one of the worst movies in my life at the movie theater, but I had a good time, you know. But the district has changed. About 15 years ago, in context of the district changing, the city made a big investment in maintaining that suburban feel of supporting it. And I suspect that we wouldn't do that today, that I suspect that what we're seeing today, what was supporting the suburban feel of the oceans of parking surrounding a groupings of stores was kind of a backwards-looking strategy. And I view this as more of a forward-looking development. And they're not going to be perfect, but I think the next 20 years, we're going to see a lot more developments like this around Edina and elsewhere. We're going to see developments like Southdale, which at one time was world-leading. And I think the developments, I think that one thing that Edina's prioritized is a great shopping experience. And I think there's some sadness among people been here for a while that the shopping experience locally isn't what it used to be. You know, there's no Oval Room, if everyone remembers Dayton's Oval Room and other things like that. And the future to have high-end shopping experiences, enjoyable experiences beyond going to the drugstore, they're going to, I believe they're going to go, they're going to be just tied with greater density. And developments like this to support more local shoppers, higher, you know, the dining, the great experiences, I think, and the transit. I think developments like this are going to help all those things, have a community of people working from home. I think developments like this are really going to help it, and I think that is going to be the future. So, does this project meet every requirement on our Design Experience Guidelines for the Southdale District? No, it doesn't. But Mick Johnson, our expert consultant, probably gave this both the briefest and most positive review that he's given to any project. And Mick's not necessarily a brief or, you know, always positive guy. I mean, he's, and that says a lot to me, and I felt very similarly. So I'm ready to support this. The one thing I would say is I would like to add something that if we do ever change drive-through rules to require some kind of exhaust, you know, some kind of idling treatment, that this property would not be grandfathered, that, you know, that would be applicable. So I would want to add that. So those are my thoughts. And with that, I bring it back to the Planning Commission. If anyone has any further thoughts or questions, we have a discussion, you know? Or does anyone have a motion? Anyone like to make a motion either for approval or for denial of this project? Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for approval subject to the staff conditions, but also subject to a maximum 10-foot wide driveline, a 50-foot setback on France. Well, let's do those two.
Green space in the parks was recommended. Additional green space, especially in the park space. That was recommended by Joanne.
Okay, yeah, additional green space.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. Does anyone wish to second or comment on, Commissioner Agnew?
I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Strauss, did you have anything further? Commissioner Bennett.
I just have one clarifying question. Commissioner Miranda, when you mentioned the maximum 10-foot driveline aisle, I assume that you're still maintaining the 60-foot at least corridor opening, right? Now bringing the sidewalks in with it?
No, no, no. So, yeah, I mean, basically, you know, doing what's in the Design Experience Guidelines where it talks about a 60-foot wide local street with 12-foot sidewalks and then eight-foot parking and 10-foot drivelines.
Okay. Further discussions or comments? Commissioner Barubi, I see your mic is odd. Do you have something you wanted to add or say?
No, I unmuted because I was going to second. And Kate, we're on track.
Thank you. Well, with that, it sounds like we're ready. Commissioner Olson, excuse me, not Commissioner Olson. Ms. Olson of the Edina staff, would you do a roll vote, please? And by the way, I have it on good faith that no one has mailed in a vote tonight. So these will all be, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote?
Thank you, Chair Nemrav. Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Nemrav?
Aye. So I believe that's approval. Planner Teague, what's the path? Does this go to the council on December 1st?
That is correct.
Thank you. Have a good discussion there. Well, it's now 10:07, so I'm just going to segue promptly to our next public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is a zoning ordinance amendment, preliminary rezoning. Hello, did someone say something? Am I speaking? I don't mean to speak over someone, but a zoning ordinance amendment, preliminary rezoning, revised overall development plan, preliminary development, and another EAW consideration for 6,600, 6,800 France. I believe Planner Teague will be presenting.
I will. Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this property, again, is located in the Southdale District. You're all familiar with it. We went through sketch plan. It's the property owner's, the Southdale Office Center, straight west of Southdale itself. Just under 22 acres in size, two office buildings, actually a series of three with Tavern on France and the Bank of America on the south. Back in 2017, a PUD rezoning was created for the site. What you're seeing on the screen is the approved overall development plan. So there is a PUD district for this site. So the zoning would say that this is the only development that could occur on the site. If somebody wanted to do something different, we would have to go through a zoning ordinance amendment to amend that PUD. So somewhat similar as the last project, with the exception of there is a PUD already in place, but it's really that same criteria that we're looking at. And so just to quickly run through what is approved for the site is a six-story medical office building. Along France, there was to be a retail building, a four-story hotel, new tavern on France, additional retail building, there are two additional retail buildings, an eight-story residential tower. The two existing office towers would remain and a new six-story office in the middle. One of the main features is this wooner that ran through the site, both east-west and this And this was viewed as kind of that western promenade. That went through the site and then would connect up to the north. Now, when this project was approved in two thousand seventeen. The design experience guidelines weren't formally adopted. We were in the middle of the process. We had guidelines that were, we were reviewing, but we didn't have that finished product. Um, but this was generally, it was well received and it was approved. Unfortunately, the project was never built. Uh, none of the phases. Uh, came through. So again, the uh, the zoning is P U D. The underlying zoning was planned office district. The site has a height overlay district of four stories, so. Not sure if you're seeing my cursor, but this is the site here. Again, it's in a four story area. However, the P U D did allow that an eight story residential building and a six story office and medical building. So this site is guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential. It's this white pink. Area on the west side of France, so not quite as intensive a use as in between France and York. Maximum density here would be seventy-five units an acre. Again, in our pyramid of discretion, where at the bottom end where the city has discretion, that this would be a zoning ordinance amendment. To accommodate that rezoning to a new P U D. So with this project, a nine story. Uh, office building is proposed in the middle, a four story medical office. A twelve thousand square foot restaurant that would be the, potentially a new tavern on France. A new water treatment plant. Three above grade parking structures and a thirteen story uh, apartment building. And a six story apartment building that wraps the, uh, the north parking ramp and I'll show uh, graphics of that here in a minute. But they, as you know, they did go through sketch plan. This was uh, what was considered. So some of the changes that they've made since, um, since the sketch plan. With this north parking ramp, this is where they've provided a liner building. Um, to help screen that. It's on three sides. They've eliminated this connection to the residential um, building here. They have eliminated the public safety, um, a new fire station, potentially to be located here. They've eliminated that. The new office in the middle of the development has been rotated. They've created some uh, additional green space, kind of a public um, gathering space. Uh, in this location here, they've eliminated one of the retail restaurant pads. Uh, the medical office remains the same and the water treatment plant has been slightly relocated. Those highlight some of the changes from the sketch plan. So here is a look at the, the site plan that's proposed. Again, here's that liner building around the parking ramp. Now separated thirteen story apartment. This is that public space that I mentioned. Existing office building remains. They relocated or, or turned a middle office building. This would be that restaurant element. Existing uh, office building would remain. This would be the wa- whoops. The water treatment plant. Parking ramp and then the, the medical office. Uh, this wasn't provided in your packet, but this was some of the feedback that we received. Can't remember if this came through better, uh, better together or correspondence, but there was um. A request for a shadow study. So the applicant did provide this. Uh, so here, as you can see, it's similar. In the December month, there are shadows. Um, that would, but it looks like they mainly spill um, away from the residential area, the single family residential area to the west. Here's a look at the project itself in the uh, the medical office building, the restaurant. A new office in the middle, the thirteen story tower. This is a look from Valley View. Again, here's that liner building around the parking ramp, thirteen story apartment, existing. Um, existing office building, new parking ramp, new office building and the existing office. This is a look from Valley View. This was the, the liner building. And again, I'll let the applicant go through these in more detail. This is a look from Valley View. This is a look from Point of France, the thirteen story tower adjacent. That public gathering space. So with this request, again, there's an EAW as part of this. Um, a zoning ordinance amendment to revise that P U D from two thousand seventeen. So it's a revision of that overall development plan and site plan review. So in going through some of the, the site plan elements. In regard to, first off with the parking. Uh, there is just under twenty-nine hundred parking stalls provided. Um, based on our zoning ordinance, overall, the required number of parking stalls is just under twenty-eight hundred. So it's actually code compliant in regard to our parking regulations. Uh, SPAC Consulting, again, did the, did this parking and transportation work on this project? They did conclude that this project does have an excess of eight hundred to fifteen hundred parking stalls. As part of that give to get as proposed here by the applicant, there, they are suggesting. Public parking in this north ramp. That would be available to the public, potentially Roslin Park, activities that go on there, fireworks display, et cetera. Or the district parking for Southdale. Um, so that accommodates some of that excess parking. Terms of traffic, um, the access in and out is generally the same. It would be eliminating one access point in the middle. Kind of a reconfiguration of the France access points. Um, again, general, generally similar access points off of Valley View. Again, Mike has done the, uh, the traffic study. Um, there are some recommendations for mitigation. And I'll let Mike go through those as part of your presentation. In terms of landscaping. This project actually goes well beyond what's required for our general landscaping requirements. Overstory trees, this three times what the code would allow. So there, as you can see, there's a lot of opportunity for planting and um, they are providing that. In terms of floor area ratio, that, that is right around one for this project, which is similar to the previously approved project. Uh, in terms of building material, as with the US Bank site on that last project, it appears that the restaurant doesn't meet that. Well, potentially a couple of issues with the building materials. There's some medical, or metal elements. Um, within that first sixty feet. And also the seventy-five percent transparency. So part of the conditions of approval here would be to, to meet those standards again. Similar with the last uh, request. Uh, in terms of pedestrian circulation, much improved on the perimeter. They're meeting the fifty foot setback along France. And along sixty-six. And Valley View Road, which is thirty-five feet, with the exception of. The water treatment plant and the parking garage here. Um, goes into that thirty-five foot setback that were, that suggested in the design guidelines and in city code. Um, and again, it's just a, a small area, corner of the building here, uh, that doesn't comply. In terms of the interior, they would be providing um, kind of that boulevard style sidewalk along the existing. Um, drive entrances in and out of the site, also to provide that um, pedestrian experience through the site east to west. In terms of flexibility that's requested through the P U D, I apologize for the small print here. Um, but they would be asking for flexibility again through the P U D for building height, four story limit. They're asking for the six stories. Um. Thirteen stories and nine stories as proposed here. Uh, in terms of floor area ratio, the underlying. Or the previous zoning was planned office district, which allowed an F A R up to point five. And the proposal here again, consistent with the, with the existing P U D is up to one. And they are code compliant again with parking. So again, primary issues, is the proposal reasonable to justify the P U D? And then consideration of the EAW and again, Ashley is here to present the detail on the environmental uh, study. So again, with this project, staff has outlined alternatives for the planning commission to consider for both approval and denial. On this one, however, staff um, is recommending denial. Um. Understanding that the proposal here is, it would be an improvement over existing conditions out there certainly. But we just didn't feel that, uh, there's been enough here to adequately address the greater Southdale District Experience Guidelines. Some of the concerns we have would be the pedestrian and vehicle connectivity through the site. Um, the lack of following the street typology, particularly along Valley View Road. Concerns with the building heights along Valley View and how it transitions into the neighborhood. Um, and again, regarding connectivity with the turning of that middle office building, it blocks that. You know, the previous plan had that north-south woofer, woofer through the site. And that's not provided in any way with the site. So really. The best connection to the north is uh, along France. So some of the detail, again, here is that approved plan for the site. And with the proposal here again, with turning this building. Uh, we lose that interior north-south connection. And in terms of the street typology, it's mainly in this area here where staff has some concern. So this is from the design guidelines. So as you look at this graphic here, this is the, the uh, single family neighborhood to the west. The street here would be Valley View. And what's suggested is a row of townhomes to kind of transition from the single family neighborhood into the more intense Southdale District. And the suggestion here is for a maximum height of thirty-six feet. While the proposal here is, I think it's fifty-seven feet for the five story building that faces Valley View. What's this transition area that um, that staff has some concerns with? Um, they've done a nice job of landscaping along Valley View to hide the uh, parking structures. But it just isn't that transition uh, that we were looking for. So staff doesn't feel that the, the P U D is justified uh, in this case, again, for the reasons. Uh, that I cited. Um, also, when looking at the comprehensive plan. Some of the, the suggestions where we talk about for large sites, we would like to see some vertical mixed use, that they'd be encouraged on these larger sites. There's no vertical mixed use proposed here. And again, that edge or transition area, uh, the comp plan suggests moderately sized liner buildings. To soften those edges, um, more medium density, kind of that townhome style that we, uh, that was shown from that graphic earlier. So with that, the second issue is the consideration of the EAW and with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley. And then again, Mike will follow Ashley with the uh, traffic report.
Thanks, Carrie. Um, similar to the last project we talked about, I'm not gonna go through all of the upfront slides since we kind of already went through that. Um, earlier tonight. So this is just focused on the EAW that was completed for the, the current project. So an mandatory EAW was identified again through Minnesota Rules forty-four, ten, forty-three hundred, subpart thirty-two for the mixed use development. Um, the EAW was completed by Kim Lee Horn on behalf of the city. Um, the EAW was noticed in the EQB monitor and then posted to the city's website for a thirty day public comment period starting on November second. And that will end on December second, so we are currently in that, that public comment period. Um, written comment should be submitted to Carrie Teague. Um, via email by four P M on December second to be included in the uh, formal record of the EAW. Um, so again, as we kind of highlighted earlier, um, not on this slide, but the standard EAW form covers twenty different questions. Um, just kind of standard questions. Some of the different topics that are covered are land use, water resources. Um, in- including surface waters and storm water, um, hazardous materials and contamination, transportation. Um, and Michael will talk a little bit later on traffic. Um, you know, habitat and endangered species and um, cumulative are some of the topics. Um, I guess just to kind of highlight some of the things identified in the EAW, there really weren't any. Um, major impacts or significant environmental effects identified in the EAW. Um, you know, there was a few things that were identified or, you know, had potential permitting or approvals that would be needed and those would be standard kind of. Um, it, through the, the development process, through the state and then the local agencies. Um, a couple of things to note, I guess, as far as what was identified in the, the EAW, um. You know, wastewater, um, and wastewater and uh, domestic waters, you know, similar to these type of developments. Um, everything will be utilized or they'll be utilizing the existing trunk mains. Um, from a habitat endangered species perspective, um, nothing really showed up. This is in the high potential zone for the rusty patch bumblebee. And as Carrie had noted, um, the site will be increasing uh, landscape and then also, you know, potential pollinator species on the site. By all of the increased landscaping on the site. Um, from a stormwater perspective, the site will be meeting um, Watershed District and city requirements. Um, and, and will be including some additional B M Ps than what is out there currently. Um, so really nothing was highlighted, um. As a, like I said, a significant environmental effect um, in, in the document. Um, so I guess as far as process, so the city will respond to comments received during the public comment period and will develop the findings of facts and conclusions. And then the city will make the determination on the need for an E I S.
With that, we'll go to Mike.
Great. Thanks, Carrie and Ashley. I'll jump in. Uh, similar processes our last project and similarly sized project. Um, the full traffic study we did and we have been working on this site for about a decade with Carrie, so we have long history out there. Uh, but we did get a revised site plan a couple of weeks ago and that's the one that Carrie showed. Uh, we're forecasting that this updated site plan will generate about thirty-three hundred vehicles in and then out during the day, so sixty-six hundred trips. With about three hundred in, with, with about six hundred total trips in the morning and eight hundred trips total in the P M. Uh, big discrepancy is Carrie talked about the parking. And they're proposing almost twenty-nine hundred and code requiring about twenty-eight hundred. Now, there's two different data sets we use to forecast traffic. One is based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That is a national data set and it has been compiled over thirty years. Um. The I T E guidelines actually recommend whenever possible using local data. And we've spent a significant amount of time and effort that SPAC Solutions collecting regional twin cities parking data. And uh, we forecast that this site will generate pre-COVID times about thirteen to fourteen hundred peak parking stalls. I T E based on older national guidelines is more in the two thousand range. Um, so that's where we have this big discrepancy that Carrie did mention. Um, that we would expect the peak parking to somewhere be in that bigger range of thirteen hundred to two thousand vehicles. But still, the, they're proposing eight hundred more stalls than the higher end of the range we would expect. Uh, we did analyze all the intersections around the site and the roadways around the site. The one recommendation we have. Is that the southern access point on France Avenue. That currently has a traffic signal, uh, we would want to add a second outbound left turn lane to what is proposed. Uh, that there will be significant P M peak hour traffic as all these folks leave the office building complex. Uh, that they would need that second left turn lane at the signal to maintain sta- good level of service. So that's the quick run do- rundown.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Ashley. So. In conclusion, I'll just wrap up. Again, we've outlined alternatives for the planning commission to consider for both approval and denial. After the statement of denial, the findings. Uh, that are outlined in your report and we would also recommend as part of that motion would be that the council not require the E I S. Um, again, we've received a lot of comments, together and through the correspondence. Most of the, most of them were just comments, residents' comments and concerns in regard to the. to the the project. Some of the questions that I don't believe were answered in our presentation, there was a question about the water treatment plant and if there's odors that would come from that. I did check in with the city engineer and he said there shouldn't be any odors that would come from that plant should have been located there. And one thing also in the in the review memo from engineering, there's a number of issues that still need to be worked out in regard to the water treatment plant. They would have to come back for a site plan review and we'd take a closer look at the setbacks and how the trucks circulate, load from that site. So there may be some changes there. But again, as part of that gift that the applicant is suggesting, that's a potential location for the water treatment plant. It's been identified as a need somewhere in this district. As you recall, we did consider water treatment plant right across the street underneath the water tower a couple of years ago that was not approved by the council. They had looked at another site within a residential area, was decided it's not appropriate at that site either. So we know one has to go in this general area. This is this is one alternative. So with that, I will stop there and answer any questions you might have. And again, the development team is here.
Thank you, Planner Teague and team. Commissioner Strauss, do you have a question?
Yeah, a quick question to Carrie about that water treatment plant. Would that be similar to the facility as we toured some couple of years ago? We all put us all on a bus and we were around and looked at some city facilities, but the one behind Jerry's, who I mean, I mean, that's the kind of operation we're looking at that I would guess most people have no idea that's there.
That's correct.
Right, okay, yeah, thank you.
Although with the one that was proposed across the street, we were going to have some educational features and explanation of what happens within within the facility. So there's some opportunities there potentially.
I don't know if there's a quick answer. Why did the council reject the one across the street?
There was some concerns with the architecture and they wanted to beef that up. Then in the middle of that, there was another opportunity came on another site. In the end, it's still still out there.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with questions for staff or our consultants on the E W or park or traffic or parking?
I have a question for Mr. Spac and that's could you could you go a little more into you in your study, you talked about the issues for traffic on sixty-sixth Street and for Valley View. You talked about a diet on Valley View and we have a lot of residential, a lot of residents who are concerned about traffic on sixty-sixth. I wonder if you could talk about those two streets for a few minutes?
Yeah, and this is going back almost a decade and the different recommendations we've had. Valley View, based on its current traffic load and what we expect in the future, would work fine as a three-lane section. So one lane in each direction with left turn lanes at key intersections. So there is extra pavement out there and that's just identifying that for when the city eventually comes back around and reconstructs Valley View. So we're not saying that this developer should come out and rip it up just to make it narrower. But we wanted to make that key identification. And also, sixty-sixth going into the neighborhood, in this study and past studies, we've just found with our travel shed studies, there's little reason for folks from this office complex and this proposed development site to go through the neighborhood. And that's been a common question with this development, this Dell next door. But we keep researching that concern and don't find that there would be cut through traffic through the neighborhood. Just the vast majority of these sites just want to use those arterial systems and get out to the freeways.
Thank you. That's all I had. Do any other commissioners have questions for staff, Ms. Payne or Mr. Spac? Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I'm sorry I had to step away for a sec, so apologize if this was already asked. But Carrie, when you referenced the Southdale, I forget if it was in the Design Experience Guidelines, but for the transition to the neighborhood, could you bring that graphic back up just to help us understand what that is encouraged to be and what it isn't? Now, I believe it showed a thing of townhomes with like a fifteen-foot front yard setback to the road. So I mean, that's that's really close. So it is the proposal putting things closer to the road that are taller or are they just keeping stuff farther back and just having them start taller? Sorry if you already answered this.
Yeah, no, that's a good catch. I never noticed that fifteen-foot setback there because the the city code and the Design Experience Guidelines talks about a thirty-five-foot setback.
Yeah.
They are meeting that thirty-five-foot setback. The difference here is the thirty-six feet height that's suggested, their building is five stories and it's around fifty-seven feet tall.
Yeah, so it's just kind of by like, as far as I see it, it's kind of bypassing that that buffer structure to get to something taller, not necessarily as quick per this graphic. And I I mean, I think the purpose for having something close to the road is just, you know, acting that road, having people live close to the sidewalks and having it more urban. So I I was just, and then I know you mentioned something was protruding farther out or into the setback along France. What specifically was that? It was kind of all from the proposal.
Yep, the the part of the project that doesn't meet the setbacks on the perimeter is the water treatment plant. So it's just this little corner.
Just that.
And a corner of the parking structure. Otherwise, they meet the the fifty-foot and the thirty-five-foot setbacks all around the site.
And I guess the next question for that water treatment plant, how much is that design and configuration and layout set in stone? Because I know, I mean, I know it's it was proposed across the road and, you know, it was too flashy, except for me who would really like to see a water treatment plant look racy, you know?
I remember you liked that one.
Oh, yeah, that was incredible. It was badass.
It was. Yeah, so this one has not been developed anywhere near that level of detail. If this site is determined that it's appropriate here, they would still need to come back for a site plan review and we'd take a look at the architecture. So, yeah, there would need to be a lot more focus on that site. The engineering memo points out some of the issues that that they see just in this very basic.
Okay.
So it's kind of a placeholder at this point.
Okay, because, yeah, I mean, I just quick comment. I pointed out before when we've allowed setbacks that get, I guess, you know, tighter along the road, especially that curves, this is an example of it not being ideal. You know, if the road was curving away and it was closer, then obviously it's not really impacting any visuals, but this, in this case, it does. So I was just curious. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. I had one other question also. One of the one of the comments I'm better together dealt with the water treatment facility, asking, will there be odor from the water treatment facility? Is there a way to answer that question?
Yes, yeah, as I indicated, I checked in with the city engineer today to to ask him that question because I saw that comment. And he says, no, there shouldn't be any odors from this type of a facility.
Okay. Any other questions by the commissioners?
Yeah, there'll be enough of a chlorine smell for so long that you can't smell anything. So it should be good. I'm just kidding.
Tip your waitress. So do we have any other further questions by the? Okay, the applicant, would you like to speak?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I commend you for your service and putting in overtime this evening. Hopefully, this is not a typical evening for you and we'll do our best to be brief. I'm again Andy McIntosh with McGough, and I'm one of the four presenters this evening from our project team. I'm joined by Victor Pichati from H G A, who led the master planning and design efforts for the project. I'm also joined by Tom Lincoln with Kim Lee Horn, who led the civil engineering, including our stormwater management efforts on the project. And our new team member since we last visited with this group is Dave Stahl from Cunningham Group. He was brought on board following our sketch plan process specifically to enhance the design and planning on the north end of the site and create a great residential community on that portion of this project. The Southdale Office Partners is the ownership group that both resides their businesses at this site and owns the owns the site. And the project team were proposing the rezoning and overall development plan for this mixed-use revitalization and expansion of the nineteen-seventies era property. We have made numerous fundamental improvements to the plan since we last met with you, both in response to feedback we received from this commission and other stakeholders, both in the neighborhood and on the council. While we have not achieved one hundred percent alignment with the city's Design Experience Guidelines as identified by both Mick Johnson and Carrie Teague in their reports, we have incorporated many of those guidelines, also identified by Carrie in his report, and we align well with the role of the district as it plays in the city V D I N A. So I'm just going to read a couple of bullet points here right from the Greater Southdale District Plan in regards to some of the visioning and the role that this parcel in particular is supposed to play within the greater city. So concentration of jobs, residences, medical service, traffic and activity. I'm on page, the very intro of the of the Greater Southdale District Plan. Role as economic engine for the city and the region, meeting the diverse housing needs of the population, a retail and services hub for the community, and offers the capacity for growth and change. We think that Commons on France contemplates a multi-phase development that will ultimately offer a rich mix of uses and public realm. Carrie touched on him. Victor and Dave Stahl will tour you through that shortly. Our project objectives have remained consistent throughout the effort, and they include expanding and enhancing the connected office park, creating a new COVID-adapted environment for people to collaborate, create, mentor and innovate. We think that's still going to be important. Using the Greater Southdale District Plan and the Design Experience Guidelines, along with benchmarking for market viability and existing site conditions, which Carrie Victor's going to touch on here shortly, to guide the improvements to the site in support of the city's vision, introducing new amenities to the site, dining, service retail, plazas and common areas, pocket parks and tree-lined walks that will benefit both tenants, residents, neighbors and those visiting the site, increasing stormwater management on the site to mitigate the neighborhood flooding and improve water quality in Lake Cornelia, incorporating sustainable strategies into the planning, design and operations which focus on the human health impact, energy efficiency and climate change, and offering a cost-effective solution for the city's domestic water treatment requirement. With that, I am going to turn it over to Victor and he and Dave will take you on a quick tour of the site.
Good evening, everybody. Can I just do a quick audio check and visual check? Can you all hear me okay and see the see an aerial photo of the site?
Yes.
Yes, to both. Thank you so much. I will go to a better screen mode. Thank you for hanging with us this evening. Really appreciate that. And thank you to Mr. Teague, whose command of the detail of two complex projects is really extraordinary. Thank you for that, Carrie. Appreciate it and apologize apologies if I repeat some of the things you shared earlier. This is an aerial just to orient us to the site and the overall boundaries bounded on the east by France Avenue, on the west by Valley View Road, which connects at sixty-ninth Street to France, and the site is bounded on the north side by sixty-sixth Street. This graphic illustrates existing assets on the site. There are currently five buildings. The Bank of America building you'll see here is not part of this proposal or part of this project. So on the project site, there are five buildings, two larger office structures, two low-rise office structures and the Tavernon France facility. The proposal you will see is to retain the two large office buildings, which contain about three hundred and sixty thousand square feet. They employ a thousand people and are really wonderful assets anchoring the site. In terms of sustainability, one of the most sustainable things that the project can do is preserve and enhance these existing assets. So while they remain part of the plan, we are in active conversations with the ownership team to talk about changes and improvements to the existing structures to enhance their energy efficiency and sustainable qualities. Three of the smaller buildings are proposed to be raised. We will share with you that there are a number of existing conditions and characteristics of this site that are challenging, which you probably noted from the previous work. By raising three of the low-rise buildings, it does provide much-needed flexibility in order to create a sustainable development around those two anchor existing buildings. It should be mentioned, the current site has approximately one thousand five hundred surface parking stalls, which is something that the team is excited to change and remediate. And if I forget to say it later, the proposed plan now has one hundred and five surface parking stalls. So it is seven percent of what you see on the site if you were to to visit it today. So this is the proposed master plan, and my colleague, Dave Stahl, and I will share it with you in three portions. There is a larger center portion that's bookended by the local street on the south and the local street that circumnavigates the sixty-six hundred building on the north. Once again, this is the sixty-eight hundred existing building and sixty-six hundred building. This center part of the development proposes a new office building located here. The office building has been reduced in height from ten stories to nine stories. It has been shifted further to the east for its end base to abut France Avenue at that fifty-foot setback line to reinforce the street wall. The attached parking structure shifted with the building, allowing the preservation of another fifty-foot swath of some of the mature trees that are in this portion of the site. This parking structure is a five-level parking structure. One level is completely below grade, below Valley View. There would be then four levels from at Valley View and above. There is a one-story grade change on this site from France to Valley View. So this same structure would be three levels facing west, although it is clad with with program space. R one is a proposed bill-to-suit restaurant. You've heard the possibility of a new Tavernon France mentioned. And then between the restaurant and the new office building are new pedestrian-oriented plaza environments. You have heard a concern about a north-south through connection not being there anymore due to the rotation of the building. Now, a couple of reasons for that. We'll talk later about the Design Experience Guidelines and the vision for a West Promenade, which is shown to be along the Valley View corridor. So we'll talk more about that in a moment. And if vehicular traffic is mitigated from passing through this area, the team felt that providing more static, vehicle-free areas in a south court and a north court, this currently with service parking, but hopefully as transit develops and there's less automobile requirements could also turn into a court and then a new north court, north commons here. In that sense, traffic cannot pass through north to south. There is only drop-off provided for the office building here and a small complement of surface parking primarily dedicated to handicapped accessible parking stalls proximate to the building as well as a small complement of visitor stalls. Between the restaurant and the office building is a new recessed plaza. There's some seating walls wrapping that, a water feature, and one of the sustainability components. And one of the sustainability components is the introduction in select areas of permeable paving. And the basin or the lower level of that plaza is proposed to be permeable paving as another sustainability feature, speaking to stormwater uh management. This plaza has the opportunity to be activated during the daytime by office users and restaurant patrons and evenings and weekends um by restaurant patrons and events that could take place in that uh plaza, such as art fair, farmer's market, music events and so forth. As Kerry mentioned, in this area, the previous proposal indicated a public safety facility uh which the city is seeking a site for in this area. Based on neighborhood concerns of traffic um as well as uh sirenoise for emergency vehicles, um that program has been uh eliminated, which also allowed for a larger stormwater management basin in that particular area and more green space. The overall plan, uh as the name suggests, Commons on France acknowledges that this is a transition parcel. It is partly urban, facing France Avenue as a boulevard and more urban um oriented amenities, more natural areas as it trends to the northwest to Roslyn Park and then the Cornelia, Cornelia Residential Neighborhood to the west. So thematically, a collection of paved urban-like plazas at the south and the north, and then natural commons areas such as large greenways along Valley View as well as along France, provide both an urban and natural setting that the team believes is fitting and appropriate for a transition site. This is one of the renderings in the packet that indicates the design for the outdoor plazas between the proposed restaurant and proposed new office building. A short summary about the south portion of the site. A new program is introduced there, a four-story medical office building. And then west of the medical office building um is a parking structure that serves patrons of the office building, I mean of the office building and medical office. There is stormwater retention through the west. I'm sorry, to the south and to the west, the water treatment plant that had been mentioned. Regarding the one aspect regarding the odor, odor discussion, it should be mentioned, this is treatment of stormwater, not sanitary. Um, and so I think that's where, you know, you're hearing that odors are not a concern, given that it's treating gray water, not, not black water. Um, so this is an aerial photo pulled back hovering almost above the water tower, not quite, but we can see the medical office building in the foreground here. This is a sunset shot, but this implies that there are two different tones of brick along with ample areas of glass and windows. All mechanical equipment proposed on the site would be screened and not visible to view. Moving further north, you see the restaurant amenity, the South Commons Plaza, new office building, and then street-level glassy areas, linkages that connect the campus together. This view shows um an enhanced pedestrian experience, I'm gonna back up a step, here along this particular local street. I'll get back, back into it in more detail later, but the big picture is this area has been widened in order to dramatically widen the landscape and pedestrian area from what exists today to be in compliance with the street typology for a new local street. So I'm gonna invite my uh colleague Dave to step in here and share observations about the northern part of the site as well as the housing programs.
Great. Thank you, Victor, and uh thank you very much, uh commissioners, for uh this long evening you're having to sit through. Um, currently, the north portion of the site is almost entirely paved surface parking for the sixty six hundred building. Now, to bring on additional uses, um we have to uh condense that and structure the parking. So the sixty six hundred building is still remaining, yet we're adding um quite a number of other uses to the spa, the site. Therefore, to balance that need of the housing and sixty six hundred building, it gives us a six-story ramp. And when I say six, it's six stories along Valley View. As Victor mentioned, it's a lower on that side, five levels on the France Avenue side. Well, that happens to balance very nicely with wrap lining housing. It was mentioned earlier that Valley View ideally would have uh thirty-five-foot maximum uh townhome-type units. Well, um, that is true, but uh the six-story ramp on that side, we did think it would be nice to uh cover that all. And if you're looking at it as a sixty-six-street building, it continues around sixty-sixth uh has a number of similarly sized buildings. We have our fifty-foot setback on sixty-six, which would allow um a nice green living space between the residents there and uh the people walking by. All of those units have balconies. The ground floor units would have uh stoops and access to come and go. So uh activating it, making it a very livable, nice area. The review, um, there was an inquiry why the fourth side of the ramp wasn't wrapped. And um we looked at this and a couple of reasons. One, um, that's probably the least desirable side from a uh renter standpoint. It's very close proximity to the office. There's also not a lot of room there for the green space that the rest of the wrap provides. And lastly, if we added that many more units, um, the ramp would have to gain probably another level to a level and a half, therefore going higher um and then exposing it. So um we thought it made a lot of sense to leave that site open. It'll be a very lovely uh design, but keeping the housing where the people would want to live. Going along sixty-sixth, uh, there is a step in the liner housing from the six-story portion to five. We also wanted to minimize that uh wall-type feeling, so we have a break. And then finally, a break now between that wrap building and the uh thirteen-story tower at the corner, allowing people to come through, views, access around the site. That center area also provides a nice sense of arrival for residents. It's the kind of front door for guests that are uh coming to visit the site or their drop-off for uh short-term um stopping. The thirteen-story tower mirrors the height of um on France, um, excuse me, I just forgot the name of the building to the uh north.
Point of France.
Point of France. Thank you, sir. Um, it mirrors that height and it kind of provides a nice gateway from sixty-six as you go from the more retail-active portions of town going down toward the park and residential areas. So I think that's the highlights for the um residential and I'll hand this back to you. Oh, thank you. I'll, I'll go through some of the spights just to uh speak to it. This is the uh south side court of the drop-off for the two residences. There will be a small um retail component, hopefully a nice little coffee shop, look activating the north pedestrian plaza and um a nice drop for residents. Just as note, the resident access to the ramp is separate from the office goers coming is going to um just to have their own areas of entry and exit to minimize congestion. Next slide, please.
Sorry, that was the last slide on the housing, David.
Oh, okay. Well, that's uh, that's great. I'll hand it back to you then, Victor. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so again, we're trying to be sensitive to time. That's our tour of the site. There's one other last portion that we'd like to talk about before uh Andy summarizes for us. Um, as you noted, um, Mr. Teague uh has recommended not approval of this plan and so we did receive um various critiques from city staff and also pointedly from the um, the uh Architecture Field Office Review. And so we just wanted to respectfully take a little bit of time to highlight some of those and offer um the design and ownership team's reasoning for select proposals and portions of the plan for your consideration as we address some of those review comments. Firstly, what deserves to be mentioned is that there are some very unique and one could say challenging uh characteristics of this site. This aerial photograph does a good job of illustrating that there is significant existing infrastructure in the form of these office buildings, which if you were doing it brand-new, um, perhaps occupy the dead center of the site and offer some compromises to long-term development. Secondly, there is a desire to preserve the majority of a mature stand of trees um in this area as well. There is um along this curvilinear edge, which provides some geometric challenges. There's also groundwater and flooding issues in this portion of the site, which the proposal seeks to um to remediate. And then there are, there are a few characteristics along Valley View Road that inform why the site plan proposal has proposed a greenway and a green commons rather than the street typology that is illustrated in the Design Experience Guidelines. I'd like to talk about that first briefly, if I may. This is a snippet from the Design Experience Guidelines that shows the prominence and importance of this development site in providing this West Promenade connecting from sixty ninth street to the corner of sixty-sixth and Valley View and onto Roslyn Park. This is the street typology diagram that Kerry showed earlier. Just to repeat some of the characteristics. Street typology one A, the West Promenade, suggests a fifteen-foot setback from Valley View, thirty-six-foot-tall um townhome developments, a sixty-foot-wide one-ear, this sort of combined pedestrian-favored um way that also can accommodate automobiles and then further development beyond that. We created this diagram to try and share some of the challenges posed by the literal application of this street typology onto the realities of of the site. If we begin here near this intersection, this street typology is compromised from sixty-ninth and France all the way to the end of this ATM loop um that is part of the Bank of America development. So this portion is challenged and quite literally off of the project scope. So there could be townhomes provided in a stretch here. These blue dashes are to scale. These would represent one twenty-eight to thirty-foot-wide bay um of a townhome. Then there are some existing access points into the site. Here is the southern east-west street. Here is the northern east-west street. And from the time these buildings were first developed, they are being serviced off of the Valley View side. So there is another curb cut here that accesses the service access for sixty-eight hundred as well as a small complement of underground parking. And there's a similar service back-of-house access to the sixty-six hundred building, directly off of Valley View in this location. So bracketing between those existing um curb cuts, which need to remain to service these buildings, there can be another complement of townhomes. However, these would occur in exactly the location where the mature stand of trees is desired to be preserved. So that poses a challenge for this particular row here. It's the trees or the townhomes. Then there could be four more. However, the rotation of the sixty-six hundred building really makes it even bigger than it is on the site because of that geometric challenge. Addressing that, there's an existing road that navigates the perimeter of that building that further constrains this dimension of the site. So there's some real oper, current operational characteristics that make this street typology less than realistic on this site. And that, there is a parking component to in, to introduce. These could be designed, the street typology doesn't say, as single-loaded or double-loaded townhomes. They're facing one direction or they're facing both directions. These townhomes will require uh parking. Um, at this scale, um, it's not feasible to park underneath them. So there's the question of these green lines of where does one pull into their parking of their townhome? Um, from Valley View, which would necessitate multiple curb cuts, or from the proposed one-ear, whose character would be compromised because of repetitive um openings to parking for the townhomes. So that's a consideration that would need to be accounted for um if this were, um if this street typology were to appear like this. Hopefully, this diagram is helpful, whether one agrees or not, that mapping this street typology on this site um is a, is a mismatch. So the proposed master plan proposes a greenway that becomes the West Promenade that connects as, widens as closely as we can just off of this ATM turnaround. Um, widens to a minimum at that point of a fifty-foot setback and much more in certain areas, particularly in this oak grove. So the fifteen-foot, which to the team seemed um to encroach quite intensely on Valley View, um, both for the Valley View experience and the possibility of having a stoop outside of a townhome, the design proposes to pull back the structures instead and provide a continuous green buffer from fifty to a hundred feet deep that becomes a linear park accessible for pedestrians and bicycles, um creating the West Promenade along that side of the parcel. So we just wanted to share a little bit more detail about while we affirm the guidelines and have sought to meet them prescriptively everywhere we can, there are particularities to this site where we have attempted to meet the spirit and the goal of the guidelines where they have not been met prescriptively. Another review comment received um pertained to the east-west um connector here that this is defined as a new local street of street typology three. This is street typology three from the Design Experience Guidelines and we would like to make a case that we are meeting and enhancing this street typology in the proposed design. This street typology um offers unlimited building height, provided that um it meets these setbacks. And you can see the section here, I believe it was discussed in the last project, of two-way traffic, two-sided parking and twelve-foot pedestrian side aisles. The site master plan that you're seeing proposes this cross-section that you see here. The parking structure from what it had been, been in the sketch plan has been reduced in size and the east-west um street shifted to the south to allow much more ample pedestrian and landscape zones um lining both sides of that street. So instead of twelve and twelve, we have eighteen and twenty as landscape pedestrian zones. And rather than two lanes of parking and and two lanes of traffic, this proposes two lanes of traffic and only drop-off um where uh guests or employees working in the sixty-eight hundred building could be dropped off. So we wanted to share this to better explain So we wanted to share this to better explain the proposal at street typology 3. Finally, we wanted to talk about the boulevard street typology a bit. We are meeting those guidelines of the 50-foot setback and adhering buildings to the 50-foot setback along France Avenue. 66th Street is also a boulevard typology. And these are the diagrams from the Design Experience Guidelines. While these are titled France Avenue, the text of the guideline clearly applies them to the yellow area shown here in the diagram. What this implies is that a 60-foot, what's called a podium, is encouraged along the boulevards. And then once again, meeting these setbacks, building height does not have a stated limitation. What the proposal does actually does not avail itself of that height and density on this particular side. It is only at the corner of 66th and France that proposes a 13-story housing project that, as David mentioned, brings some parity and a gateway quality to point of France across 66. The remainder of 66, the project provides a wider-than-required pedestrian and landscape buffer zone. And this liner housing varies from just over 60 feet to about 68 feet as grade drops down. So it meets very precisely or close to precisely the podium height expressed in the Design Experience Guidelines, but does not exceed it and does not propose height above that. So what we are hoping to share here is that in areas where we have been prescriptive in many areas relating to the Design Experience Guidelines, where we have not, we've tried to share some of the background and context and reasoning for that. And then I'll just quickly summarize with also providing things in service of the neighborhood and the city that are over and above the requirements. Those include site area conveyed to the city for the construction of a water treatment plant. It includes stormwater management that not only meets the current regulations of the site, but goes beyond them in order to mitigate flooding that is now a neighborhood problem. There are plazas provided at all. Can you all still hear me? Is everybody still there? Thumbs up?
Yeah.
Was I the only one that heard all that beeping?
I'm not sure what happened.
Yeah, it was totally only you.
Oh, those were just the voices in my head.
You were talking, I think, about plazas, if I remember.
Yes, I was just summarizing some of the elements the development provides for the benefit of the city and the neighborhood that are over and above requirements or Design Experience Guidelines. Stormwater management, not only for the site, but to mitigate flooding that's a neighborhood problem. Site area for a new city water treatment plant. And corner plazas, you saw in some of the renderings, as well as mid-block that help provide connectivity to medical, retail, neighborhood, and park from each of the primary building corners. Lastly, public parking capacity in the north ramp.
Thanks, Mr. Pichati. Could I, no, you're good. I'd say interrupt you. Before you go any further, though, I just, staff, do we have, we're supposed to be recording these meetings. So is everyone from the staff back on? Is the recording function working?
Yep, we're okay.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Pichati.
I'm speaking of the...
No, thank you, I want to... You're speaking of what, I'm sorry?
Television broadcast. I don't see that the planning staff is back yet, are they? Well, Carrie's here.
Yeah, yes, I'm here.
This is Liz. It's showing as recording on my end.
Great.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt. You were just going to hand off to Mr. McIntosh, I believe, to Andy. Yeah, thank you.
I did get dropped. I've rejoined now, so I will hopefully not repeat anything Victor said. But in just wrapping up and closing before we'll turn, open it up for questions, we're excited about the proposed improvements to landscaping, tree coverage, stormwater management and treatment, sidewalks and pedestrian connections, plazas and common areas, the introduction of the domestic water treatment and district parking, all of which are made possible through the introduction of new residential and medical uses to this site and a significant reinvestment in and expansion of the existing office park. We feel like another demonstration of our alignment, though not 100% with the Design Experience Guidelines and the Greater Southdale District Plan can be found through the visioning and aspirational planning of the district that are called out for in the eight categories contemplated for all planning efforts: economic vitality and competitiveness, urban design, land use, transportation and mobility, parks and public life, district services and facilities, sustainability and water resources. Again, though we haven't been able, because of some physical challenges on our site and specifically the retaining of two of the existing structures on the site, we haven't been able to create an exact application. Those concepts have absolutely been front and center and been contemplated throughout the process by our team. We think this is a great opportunity to revitalize an aging office park and seek the highest and best use for the site and the district. To achieve a meaningful revitalization, the development will need to incorporate greater density to generate the investment needed to make the necessary improvements. We think France Avenue can serve the city as a corridor that is able to accommodate more density and mixture of uses. Concentrating growth on corridors like this allows for the creation of green space amenities and lower-density residential neighborhoods elsewhere and the preservation of those great neighborhoods that already exist. The Commons on France Project will transform the southwest quadrant of France and 66th into a vibrant, thriving corridors welcoming employees, residents, and visitors to the Greater Southdale District. And with that, we'll open it up for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any commissioners have comments? Or questions, excuse me, questions at this time? Anyone, Commissioner Bennett, hello?
I'll just wake everyone up right now. Woo! I'm assuming you can all hear me. Okay. I'll just kick it off with a few quick questions and hopefully that primes the pump and I'll probably finish with some more. But one of the, one of the comments Mick addressed quite robustly in his review, and I think it's, it sat with me not well since the sketch plan review too, is just the mixed use on-site and the energy that will kind of dissipate at different times and how we will actually keep some of these public spaces activated when it's predominantly office. And I think that his main question was the vertical mix use. So I guess my question for you is specifically on the existing and new offices, why there isn't a look? Or maybe there is and there's a reason for it, but of some conversion of that first level toward more retail and commerce opportunities? That's my first question.
Victor, I'll maybe take a stab and then you can jump in if you want. The retail and dining realm is changing rapidly. We've shown and committed to a single dining experience in the 12,000-square-foot building. It is absolutely our hope. Dave Stahl alluded to it in the first floor of the 13-story residential building to hopefully have some type of coffee component there. We think that could possibly work. And in the first floor of our new office building, which would probably be right at that France frontage, we think there's the potential opportunity there for another dining alternative. We need to get a little further down the road with potential operators to find out what that looks like and whether that can work there. The interior of the three-building future office campus there would have the ability to have a robust, you know, dining offering for the occupiers and tenants in that office building. That would be one of the objectives of this project is by creating this density of office use, we can have a real rich amenity package there in the first floor in both the base of those buildings as well as those connector corridors. And that might also include, you know, service-type retail. So we haven't shown any, but it is certainly our hope that we can figure out service-type retail and dining-type retail that will provide some vibrancy to that site. And by introducing the residential on the north end, we've obviously got neighbors to the west and existing neighbors to the north on a residential standpoint. We're hoping there's enough density there of after-hours use that that can be expanded.
Thanks, that's a great answer. And I know I don't, I mean, you understand, but maybe preaching to the choir out there also, I mean, based off of what Mick said and, I mean, what we know about office in general and where that's going, which is definitely what you know. I mean, the more mixed use that can be there, the more retail that's walkable. So is it in the same building? You have to, I mean, I think it's easy to forget this is 22 acres and it's winter half the year. So the more things that can be in, you know, these all over the place just activates all over the place. And not seeing that makes me a little nervous that it becomes a ghost town, you know, after 5:00 PM, so.
Yeah, we've, just to expand on it, we had a plan four years ago that called for a lot of retail and, you know, once burned, twice shy. And so I think we're being a little bit more cautious this time around in what we're committing to for retail. But we recognize that people want to be on the site and they have needs and they have desires, and we're going to try and introduce some uses there that would be a benefit, not just for the occupiers of the site, but for the neighbors.
Right, yeah, because, I mean, we all know where certain companies and different offices are moving and the best areas are ones that have all this kind of stuff, not next door like at Southdale Center, because no one's going to want to walk across France and deal with that, like what can we keep on the site? So that's, big thing. Okay, second quick question is, I know you've addressed it, but, I mean, we've seen it in proposals before, but I feel like the north-south flow being cut off right in the middle to me is like probably one of the most fundamental, tough things I have with this proposal right now. And I just want you to maybe better address why that's chosen and is there a potential for that to change?
Victor's taken a stab at it already, so maybe I'll take it a stab at it again and then, and then Victor, you can clean it up. You guys have seen two versions of a plan, one that contemplates a north-south corridor there that would accommodate pedestrians and vehicles. We've ultimately brought forth one that eliminates that for the vehicle traffic. We still are able to accommodate pedestrians along France Avenue. And one of the things that we think we've never been willing to sacrifice with this project is the campus impact that the multiple office buildings there can create. And so maintaining connection between those buildings allows us to keep that campus effect. It also allows us to create enough office space where we can enhance and expand the amenity discussion that I just, I just mentioned. What can we offer? You can't offer all those things if you have 160,000-square-foot office building. But if you've got three buildings that total 600,000 square feet, you can introduce a lot of amenities because people from one building or another can utilize all those things. So we have always tried to keep our buildings connected. And there's choices then that have to be made on the site. And ultimately, we decided that eliminating the vehicular movement north-south on the site was the sacrifice we were willing to make. We still have pedestrian movement north-south on the site, and we've been able to maintain our connected buildings. We think the drop-off experience on the south end of the site and the north end of the site still gives the site great vehicle access, even though there's no connectivity through the site. Victor, do you want to expand on that at all?
Sure, a couple of brief points. Creating that, mitigating vehicular passage north to south created this more static zone to the south of the office building, which was quite intentional. If there's a good way to calm traffic, it's that there isn't a destination for a vehicle to go through other than to drop off a friend, a family member at the office building, at the restaurant, and then turn back around. And so we feel that that makes a truly programmable urban pedestrian experience that could host various activities in that south plaza. Expanding a little bit on Andy's point of campus, if any of you have walked through the interconnection of the existing buildings now, you know, you go up, underground, around, and there's still, pre-COVID, we're able to host some small retail, dining, coffee, hair salon. The desire of the ownership group is to eliminate the circuitous connections between the office campus, create these vibrant, active concourse connectors that because of a critical mass of community could actually reinvigorate and support more of the amenities that do exist now, again, pre-COVID, and survive, but could those really thrive and be expanded once this campus community is created? And disconnecting the new office building from that internal experience was deemed not feasible.
I guess, thank you for that question. I guess the one question I have is, I think I don't mind vehicular flow being interrupted, right? But is it possible that you could have an opening for pedestrian and bikes to go through that building or underneath an archway or something that could permit not having to go around a building under France? Because that, like, there's just something with the flow being interrupted that fundamentally just doesn't, doesn't sit right with me on this site. But I feel like if you could walk or bike through the site, it would be a different story. Maybe not allow cars, but that's just something to think about. And I guess my last quick question is, compared to the last project, which I feel like they adhered to the design guidelines as like almost exactly as they could, and this one doesn't. I tend to really appreciate your level of detail and your rationale with certain things of why certain areas facilitate a commons versus a street room. And I think, I think we all should just, there's flexibility that needs to be built in this site because it's a transition zone. So I really wanted to applaud that. But I guess, I think it's not really a question, but a comment at this point of why you have commons versus a street room. And I, and I think a lot of that would be alleviated if there still was a way to go north-south on foot or by bike. So I'll leave it to others to pose some questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for those comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Do other commissioners have any questions for the applicant tonight? Anyone else? I have a few, so I'll ask them if anyone else has any questions following up. What, again, thank you for, thank you just generally for the good, the good presentation and their drawings and everything were very good. Thank you very much. This may have been covered already, but you've changed the building on 66th Street. You've removed the connection. What is the length of the, of the shorter building now that fronts on 66? What is the frontage on 66?
Steve, you want to tackle that?
Yeah, I can talk. Now, when you say the shorter building, shorter in height, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, it's the overall height or length, excuse me, is just under 300. three hundred feet, but we're breaking it at the middle. To even though the parking structure behind is contiguous, we're doing a uh break to try to minimize that feel in both um form, height, and some material colors to try to make it look you know, smaller in scale.
Okay, thank you. Uh what what is the, have you done calculation of the green space percentage on the on your development?
Thank you for asking. Um, we have. Um, we think it's one of the uh real attributes of our site is um we're taking a site that today and and Victor or Tom Lincoln, correct me if I'm off on these. But we're taking a site today that has two hundred and sixty thousand square feet um of pervious surface. And um we're increasing that to three hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet of pervious surface. And that includes um a couple of the small uh pervious paver areas um that Victor alluded to in our commons areas. But even with just true green space, um we have uh more than an acre more than um we had previously.
Um, one one thing that came up in the staff report was transparency of a restaurant. Can you talk about that a little bit? What what do you see for, you know, we have the Saltdale experience guidelines and they call for seventy-five percent ground floor transparency. What 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 do you see for that restaurant?
Yeah, we um yeah, we have uh been very cautious about alluding to who that's to, who 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 will ultimately occupy that building. I think everybody um generally likes Tavern on France and we would love it if we can have Tavern on France be the operator there. Um, that is not a a done deal right now. And so ultimately that dining pad will be um a build-to-suit for a specific operator. So we've um designed a building right now that ultimately will change based on the needs of the specific operator. And at that time, we will reconcile both the design needs of of that operator. For instance, uh, the uh operating group behind the tavern concepts um has their own design guidelines that they try to target with their new freestanding structures um with the design experience guidelines. So um, that would be part of our final um approvals once we have um a user and an operator on board.
Okay, thanks. And then my final question right for for now, um you you, Mr. Pichati addressed why no townhomes, row houses along Fran- along Valley View earlier. Um, but in context of the of Mr. Spack's commentary about the opportunity to reimagine Valley View, did you look into that? Is that something you could do? If you if you received some of Valley View, could you figure out a way to make make that liner property, not liner, but transition property work in that location?
Yeah, um, Valley View has certainly been um even though it's uh not France Avenue, um it has received a lot of our uh planning and design attention. After we met with this group for sketch plan, we went before the city council. And um we received a wide range of opinions from the city council on um the application of um uh Valley View and the the future plans for Valley View. And we also talked to um the city engineering department and understand that uh not only was, you know, a repavement recently done of Valley View, um but there are no plans currently in place, no capital plans in place currently to accomplish any of the um potential changes made to Valley View. So until there's more certainty around the timing and the funding for that, it's very difficult as a property owner along that um parkway to incorporate uh design into um our master plan. Um, but yeah, I mean, some of the discussions about at the at the city council went um, you know, council member Fisher even talked about, you know, adding a roundabout at sixty-ninth and Valley View um as a possible um, you know, traffic control and design feature there. So I think there are exciting opportunities along Valley View. Um, today, there's a lot of uncertainty.
MacIntosh, do any other commissioners have questions at this time?
Okay, why don't we open up for public hearing uh eleven thirty-six this Wednesday evening? And so if there are people online that would like to give some testimony, please call one eight hundred three seven four zero two two one. Use conference ID number two seven seven six one seven eight. Press star one and be placed into queue. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. The uh the city staff will let you know when you're hitting the three minutes. Um, we have received several comments through other means, by email and by the city's Better Together. Uh, if you've commented by one of those ways, we have paid attention to your comments. Uh, if someone else has raised your issue or raises it tonight, don't feel like you need to bring, you know, just repeat what the previous caller said. Um, and also, if if after the meeting, you feel like you have any feedback about how we missed your comments or if you did a good job reviewing your comments, we'd appreciate hearing it, or if there's ways we could do better. Uh, with that, I'm looking to see who on staff, one of the Dans is on. Uh, are you are one of you, or Ms. Bennerat's on also? Are you monitoring the calls?
Chair Nemirov, it's Dan Reese. I'm I'm taking the the late shift for uh Dan Bennerat. Uh, as of right now, we have one participant in queue, it looks like. Uh, so if the operator would please um unmute the line of David, and I apologize, I'm going to mispronounce his name, uh David Persky. Please uh state your name and uh uh your address for the record.
Hello there, I'm David Persky.
Can you hear us? Did we lose you or calling?
Hi there, I'm here. Yep.
Oh, you're on. You're on the air.
Okay, sorry, I um and I have the live on in the background and maybe there's just a delay there. I apologize. Um, my name is David Persky. I live on Southdale Road, um sixty-six oh nine. So I, my backyard will face toward this um new potential um apartment building um right across Valley View. Um, I followed along through um all of the meetings that the developers have had and and frankly, you know, in- impressed with the iteration that I've seen in terms of how the development or the the proposal has come along um in improving pedestrian access. Um, you know, are things I'm I'm excited about. I think my biggest comment, and and this is building on some of the questions that were raised earlier on by the um commissioner, is um it would be great to see more commercial or restaurant or dining space on the first floor um of of some of the buildings, thinking in particular about the corner at sixty-sixth and Valley View and it faces out toward Roslyn Park. Um, that seems to me like a a great place to to have coffee shop or you know, wine bar or someplace that people after disco for before going for a walk on a Saturday morning or something to pick up a beverage. Um, or stop for beverage after the fact. So, you know, on on one hand, you know, I I think a lot of the comments from the community reading on on um the board on Better Together Edina have been, you know, negative about the scale of the development and why do we need this. But I think that, you know, compared to the the surface parking lots that otherwise would be here um or that are there right now, um, you know, you know, the proposed development and bringing more people into the space um are all great, but it would be wonderful to see more opportunities for engagement after hours with businesses um rather than just an office park that sits um empty on the weekends and evenings.
Thank you for that comment. Um, Dan, do we have anyone else who wants to make a comment?
We do have uh one more caller on the line who uh if uh if that caller is interested, uh we'll need to hit star one in order to join the queue so we can give uh him or her a moment. But there is one one active caller on the line, so we'll give him about a minute or so. Um, I've got eleven forty, so if we want to say till about eleven forty-one, we can uh give that caller an opportunity.
That's good. Yeah, I guess repeat as Dan said, if you wanna call, you know, press star one.
Thank you to everyone who stayed with us tonight.
I've got eleven forty-one, so I think uh at this point, you're probably safe to go ahead.
Thanks, Dan. Well, can we get a motion then from a commissioner to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
A second. Uh, thank you. Ms. Olson, we got a motion from Ms. from Krishna Agnew and a uh second from Commissioner Strauss. Could you do a roll vote, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
I don't see Commissioner Olson, but I want to call Commissioner Olson for roll.
Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Olson did have to some work that she had to get done for tomorrow, so.
Thank you. Chair Nemirov?
Aye, thank you, Ms. Olson. So with that, it's back to the planning commission for uh discussion or motion. Um, does anyone have any further comments, any thoughts, any willingness to share? Uh, Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, I mean, I have to agree with uh staff comments and Mick Johnson's conclusion. Um, this is, and I appreciate the effort that the developers put into this. This is definitely better than what's there, which is just, you know, seas of parking. Um, but it's just very old school suburban, and I think Edina is a city that's interested in meeting the needs of the future, not the past. And it's it's incrementally better, but it's not sort of re-envisioned. And I think it really needs a re-envisioning. I mean, if you think about this, you know, as Commissioner Bennett has mentioned, it's it's however many acres, a huge number of acres. I mean, it's about the size of fiftieth and France. So it's as big as our largest, excepting Southdale, it's as big as our largest uh neighborhood node. And uh each of those nodes is like a whole neighborhood and a village unto itself. It's got you know, so much more diversity in terms of what's there and building types and stuff. And I just think this is uh in addition to, you know, the street layout, I mean, just, you know, having uh a more interesting place to be that would encourage people to go there and encourage people to stay there. And um I don't think this plan really, really does that. So um uh and then in terms of the transition, um I think, you know, on the west side, when you're closest to the to the homes on the other side of uh uh whatever street that is, um.
Valley View.
You know, uh, value, thank you. Uh, you know, four stories seems like a reasonable size, whatever. Certainly, as you move towards France, you know, you can get taller, eight to ten stories or so. Um, and there's there's some of that here, but uh and that's kind of the whole project is like, there's some of this and there's some of that, but there's nothing really to tie it all together to to give you the impression of of something new and interesting and uh sort of a destination. And I think this is a very valuable uh plot of land and a very desirable area. And as the caller mentioned, you know, it's just diagonally across from the park. Um, I think there's just so much more that could be done here that would be much more interesting. So um, so I guess overall, I'm kind of overwhelmed, underwhelmed with it, so. Thank you.
Strauss? Yeah, I I think I have similar feelings to to Commissioner Miranda. Um though my compliments to the presenters, the narrative I found really quite compelling. I um I I I I your your presentation of of how you handled the the development along Valley View, um I couldn't disagree. I think you, I mean, obviously, there there you work very hard and and I can see um how is it was a solution for you. But to me, it's still the the fact that the staff as well as the AFO office um were uh so kind of negative on it, um it's too much kind of like a double whammy for me. And uh you know, I I think like like Lewis said, I think I like parts of it, but it just doesn't quite work for me either. Thank you. Commissioner Strauss, any other commissioners wish to speak this evening? This project, Commissioner Barubi?
Yeah, um, so it does seem that that this iteration is an improvement. But I think as we mentioned at the last um meeting where you presented, this is just a prime spot in Edina. And it should be fabulous, and it's not fabulous. And I appreciate that, um, you know, there are some challenges with the site, but it's worth the effort to make it better. Um just to make it a place that people want to be. And right now, it's just it's just modestly better than what's there right now. So um I feel like it the location and the amount of land is worth the extra effort to just keep working on it. But thank you for your efforts so far.
Thank you, Commissioner Barubi. And I believe the office, the potential office, the medical office just got its first CAT scan tonight. Um any other commissioners wish to say anything? Commissioner Agnew?
Um, yeah, I I I kind of feel like it feels like an office park with a lot of parking. Um, it's similar, different, very different, but similar, I think, to what is there today. And I think you need, you know, half as much parking, which in some ways is actually perfect because maybe you could reduce the ramp to three stories and maybe put townhouses along the outside. Um, but really, one of the biggest concerns that we've had from residents of of the Point of France is the increasing congestion to traffic and and wanting more green space there. And so I want to be sure that we're only including as much parking as we need. I'm sure you were listening in on the the previous discussion we had, but providing too much parking is going to just draw more traffic into this area. And so I really think that we should be conservative in that where we can be. Um, still, there are definitely attributes that I like to what's here, um the amount of green space, some of the community areas, the layout of internal streets. Um, think though about how we can better connect into the neighborhood of the west. Um, I actually live up near sixtieth and France and echo the caller. Um, like, I would walk to a wine bar on a on a weekly basis. So what can we do to really draw in neighbors to this area? Nights, weekends, days, like especially with people working from home primarily, right? Like a coffee shop that people can walk through. I think that that's really great. Um, this is such an amazing opportunity for our community to re- be re-envisioning this area. Um, I feel a huge amount of responsibility in ensuring that it really is the best for Edina's future. Uh, this is a really exciting site that can truly transform and set the standard for what Southdale will become. I just don't believe that, in a sense, a more dense replication of what is there today is what's gonna meet that need. Thank you.
Agnew, has there anyone else? I think Commissioner Bennett, aye.
I said I'd have more comments, so I apologize in advance for the long-winded uh response that's coming. But um, yeah, my sentiment's similar to the other commissioners for sure. Um I wanted to get a little specific about a lot of the things I I really do like about your proposal. And what's interesting is I was on the side of the fence with the prior proposal that seemed to like be following the manual. But there was something that just didn't feel right about it. And there's a lot of specific details that made me nuts for that. This one's different where I feel like a lot of this doesn't fit the manual, but I like a lot of the details. Um, and I like a lot of the details, um, and I think that just is a show of the creativity you're employing to try to make this site work with what you got, and I think it just will take a little more of that creativity to get it to be something that we all can support. Uh, so, I want to, again, just get specific with the things I like, because I don't want those to change necessarily, and I want to also acknowledge, um, that they were, uh, well thought out, so the first thing is, compared to other sites, we are talking about reusing and keeping buildings and assets that we have, and that, as you guys have mentioned, is inherently challenging, because now we have placeholders, right? But that's the most sustainable thing we can do in our community, is keep what we have. And so, that's why I mentioned about, hey, can we repurpose the first level of those or something, provide some more activity and activation and energy across the site, even though it's still an office campus. Um, so I really recognize that you're using what you have, and I appreciate that, and I applaud that effort. Um, on that note, the sustainability focus that has driven your design is much more apparent than almost any proposal we've seen. Like the, or unlike the prior proposal where you have a clean slate and you could do anything, um, it's an afterthought there. So for this one, the fact that, you know, you're reusing these buildings, creating these huge green areas to hold stormwater and create open green space for people to enjoy and to create these natural buffers and parkland is really great. Um, I especially like where it then transitions to the hardscape areas where you sunk these courtyards and then exposed water. I thought that was an awesome idea, and not just having it in one spot, but a couple, um, images that you had of those, um, the graphics of what it would feel like when you walk up to it were very enticing, I, I, I mean, that, that alone is like, that's a cool area that I want to be hanging out, but to Mick's point, I just worry that with the current programming and, I guess, layout of things, um, that those will sit empty a lot of the time, and then what's the point? Uh, another thing, um, yeah, just again, with the, the graphics being very inviting and pedestrian focused, like, having a lot of intertwining sidewalks and a lot of green space, like, again, unlike the prior proposal, I could feel myself being there and enjoying what that experience is like, even though it's not a street room, this, we do have to recognize this is a transitional property from a neighborhood to the Southdale area, so there should be some feeling of, you're kind of in a quasi-suburban-urban, you know, experience across the site, and as you get closer to France, it transitions, which you kind of feel with those sunk courtyards, et cetera. So, uh, specifically with the, um, rect application, the design experience guidelines, I liked how you laid that out, because that's a question I had too, how does that fit with the house, with the office stock and the buildings you're keeping there? If you just apply the template, you all saw, like, it doesn't work that well, I still think you could get creative with how you move streets and, if then streets make some just pedestrian bike-focused, but having the trees versus townhomes, I think that's a good buffer that most residents would like, and, um, having the eighteen and twenty-foot sidewalks for those interior streets, that was something Commissioner Miranda and I mentioned on the, that they were skimping on, so I'd like to, to be overdoing that to benefit the users of the public realm. Again, I think, you know, the linchpin for me really is the flow of this site getting cut off in the middle, north-south, when you're inside of the site, because let's be honest, like, right now with how France is, you're not going to want to walk through the city and go out toward France and go along France and then come back in, you want to keep people nestled in this cool space, so if you could provide some thoroughfare or some throughway for bikes and pedestrians, you had office in the middle, um, but still choke off the vehicular traffic, I, I don't think anyone would be opposed, I don't think anyone's like, wow, I, I wish I could drive through this site, you know, if you could walk and bike through it and if you go there to work every day, you know, having those dead ends and drop-offs, um, benefit the pedestrians and the bicyclists. So, yeah, I think for me, it's the linchpin of that office building, choking off the pedestrian and, um, bike flow through the middle, um, that, that's really it for me, I, I think I could, I could live with not having the predefined street room with how much wider you've made it and having these cool commons areas, it's not just one commons area, you know, there's a lot of them, so, I like that, I like that, um, it's a different take at this property, and I think, but I feel like you're really close, but not quite there yet for me to support it, but, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Um, so my thoughts, uh, first of all, Mr. Pichati, Mr. Stahl, Mr. McIntosh, I think you guys did an outstanding, gave an outstanding presentation tonight, um, I, I think you're hearing that from everyone, too, I mean, you're, really makes us think, but I think you're also hearing from all of us, including me, right now, that we're probably not on board with the proposal how it is, and, and I'll try to summarize where I'm not on board, is, uh, briefly, if I can, um, it's really two things, one is, I don't think the project meets the design experience guidelines sufficiently, and I, we worked hard on them, um, for a couple of years, and, and, and I, I'd like to see if the project meet it better, meet them more closely, a variety of things, I won't go into them at length. Um, the second thing is, I, I think after reviewing this on the sketch plan, reviewing it tonight, getting neighborhood feedback, I, I think one thing to think about this site is that it really is a transition zone between Southdale and a neighborhood, and I, and I think at the end of the day, it's going to be hard to get as much on the site as you're seeking to get. Um, I think for, you know, for example, uh, you've discussed, uh, orally and in written materials, the, the desire to, to have some parity with Point of France, which, which I think is fine, I, I think it's, but the parity that's provided is in terms of the structure, but not necessarily in terms of the whole experience at Point of France, if you go around Point of France, or you go to the backside of Point of France, for example, you'll see a lot of open space, and, and with, with this prop, proposal, the back of it, be, behind the mirror building, is just another large building, and, um, whereas I think actually the buildings that you're building are an improvement over the, the sea of parking that we have from nineteen sixty-six, um, I think that because it's a transition zone, I, I, I think it's going to be hard to just get the, the quantity you want with all the parking structures and, and the three-hundred-foot buildings, um, I think, I think it's going to be a hard, a very hard putt, so I, for those reasons and those, those suggestions, um, I would vote against it, and I would suggest that maybe you look at a, a parcel on this, I, I think an improvement on one of the parking lots might, might be nice, but that's where I am. Do any other commissioners have comments or further questions or motions? Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, sorry, I just had one further comment, just to kind of, um, make this brief, but, uh, specifically about the townhome or row houses around the perimeter, and us trying to adhere to the design experience guidelines, we haven't really approved something in a transitional zone that follows that yet, and I, I kind of, after this presentation, emceed somewhat of a fundamental challenge, when you think about having a townhome or row house fifteen feet from the street, but then on the backside is a vuner, like, the person, you wouldn't have a yard, you wouldn't have your own kind of public space, so I think considering something different as they're proposing today, and maybe it's not specifically like they're proposing today, but maybe a, a shield of that with a vuner behind it isn't really a viable solution, and maybe another commissioner could jump in, but just practically thinking that out, and after walking through today, does anyone see it different?
I, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm actually gonna jump in and cut this one off, thank you for the comment, I think that's something that the applicant would work on with staff, but at this point, midnight, I'm just, you know, I think we should.
Or just getting started.
Yeah, either motions or other feedback about this particular, um, motion for approval, motion for denial, uh, motion with conditions? Anyone?
I move to deny.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, I move to deny based on the, the staff recommendations.
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda, Commissioner Agnew, motion and a second. Uh, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll, please, a roll vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Just, so, an aye is approving a denial?
Correct.
Okay, aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Namaroff?
Aye, and thank you, Commissioner Strauss, for that clarification.
Can I ask for one clarification, too, does that include the, um, that an EIS is not necessary? I'm assuming that was built into the motion? It was part of the staff recommendation?
Yes, that was my intent.
Uh, can, can I ask you about that, Carrie, I mean, along with that last, right, because I can see conditions changing, so if we, if we say that this property doesn't need an E, doesn't need an EIS today, but we don't get another application for a few years, when would, along with that decision survive?
Yeah, I see Ashley has turned on her, uh, camera, so we'll let her respond.
Yeah, I can respond to that, um, that's a good question, so an EAW doesn't necessarily expire, um, an EAW covers a specific project, so, um, if a project were to come in, um, and kind of meet the same criteria as what was previously studied, I mean, there is a potential, it could be covered under this environmental document, however, um, you know, an environmental document is specific to a project.
So, I guess with that clarification, I guess we approve that no E, new, no EIS is needed for this project? Uh, Commissioner Miranda, Commissioner Agnew, is that kind of your understanding, or should we take another vote to confirm it, Carrie? What do you think?
Uh, we, we could take another vote, sure.
Okay, Commissioner Miranda, Commissioner Agnew, you confirm that's?
Yes, sure.
Your motion, your second. Uh, Ms. Olson, could you do another vote, please, and again, uh, thank you, Commissioner Strauss, this is like the eighteenth time this question has come up, a vote for aye is a vote to approve the denial.
Thank you.
A vote, a vote to deny.
Yes. Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Namaroff?
Aye. Thank you, Carrie, thank you, Jerry, and Lou and Kate, thank you, everyone. Um, this will go, will this go to the consul now on December first also?
It will, correct.
Wear a comfortable chair that evening. Um, thank you, everyone, for your patience in waiting with us tonight, and we do wish you well with your meeting with consul, and if he comes back to us, we look forward to, we look forward to working with you again. Yep, have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you so much, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the, the next item on our agenda, we have a few standing items, reports and recommendations, I'll look to Planner Teague.
No.
Uh, correspondence and petitions, other than the correspondence received on this project, I don't believe there are any?
Correct.
Um, at twelve oh five AM, do we have any member comments? Commissioner Bennett?
I have one, one, uh, just, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about Southdale today, and a neighbor of mine, uh, reminded me of this concept called the fifteen-minute city, so I just encourage you guys to Google it, read about it, uh, it's really what we're trying to envision in Southdale, in different areas, so with a site as large as twenty-two acres, I mean, you could almost think of that alone as its own fifteen-minute city, so it's basically a compilation of fractals of vibrant vicinity, you know, that you're building into a larger network, and we're lucky in Edina to have such a huge expanse where no city is really around us to do so, just Google it, uh, read it, and it, it fits well with our discussions tonight, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett, good idea. Um, any other members with comments? Uh, I just have two very brief things, again, uh, Commissioner Thorson, uh, will probably address that in a future meeting, that vacancy, and I, I assume cities will look for replacement, uh, we, it's been amazing, the type of people that are available in the city to serve on boards and commissions, and then, uh, at a future meeting, we'll talk about next year's work plan also. Uh, Planner Teague, do you have anything?
Nothing with you, no.
Adjournment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
And move to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote for adjournment, please?
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Namaroff?
Aye, thank you, everyone.